Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Carlisle Select Board meeting.
May I say?
On Tuesday, April 25th, here at Town Hall. And welcome to those that have joined us remotely. Let me briefly review the agenda. We'll have time for community input. And then we have two appointments to make. Then we have a discussion about the Community Choice Aggregation Contract. The Item Four, we're going to move Item Four. So the Center Park sign, we won't be discussing tonight. The Historic Commission still needs to work some things out with them. So we will consider that at a future Select Board meeting. We have some ARPA requests and motions for approval. And meeting update, the contract approval for, is it just the fire chief contract for tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And then financial policies that we talked about at the last meeting. Town administrators' report, liaison reports, minutes and warrants. And with time at the end, should anybody wish to add any community input at the end of the meeting. So with that, I will open up the meeting and see if there is anyone that would like to offer community input. I know that the folks in the room have indicated they're not here for that purpose. Is there anybody?
Can you have a Brady Bunch screen?
Is there anybody joining us remotely that would like to make a comment at this time? Is there a way to see who's?
What's your AV guy's name?
I don't know. I don't know. Did he say his name? Okay. Sorry, we're just doing a little technical updating here.
No, the other one, the one on the right. Yeah, that's the one. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I don't see anyone who's joined us remotely indicating they would like to speak. So you can always stay through the whole meeting and speak at the end if you decide you'd like to make a comment. All right. Thank you. So let's move on to the appointments. And we have a motion, two motions in our packet. But let's begin with the first motion about appointing James Hall to be the Town of Carlisle Director, the Town of Carlisle Department of Public Works Director. That's a long title. Ryan, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. You want to come up to the fun seat? So as previously presented to this board, I'm offering for your consideration James Hall to be appointed as our DPW Director. So this is a change in title, and we adapted the job accordingly from superintendent. So essentially, what that did was strip out any references to managing parks and rec and other items that are not done in our DPW currently. I've been working with Jim now for a couple of months, while Gary has been working part-time and assisting Jim as well. And I can say, having worked with previous DPW Directors before, that Jim has all the skills and all the potential necessary in order to run a very important department. As we talked about today, Public Works is probably the third-largest interface with the community that we have here. And it's really important to provide both customer service and professionalism. And I think Jim has a ton of that. So what I like about working with Jim is his knowledge about the department, having served for 30 years, but also his ability to see into the future and where this department needs to go, which I know matches what the Select Board is looking for in terms of the future of that department and service delivery. So his resume is solid, his experience is solid, strong recommendation for me. And I offer Jim to you for questions and for appointment.
Well, I've had some interaction with Jim, too, and it's been great. And I think you're very well qualified.
I thank you.
For this position. Yeah. Anyone have any comments or questions? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I will. I move that the Select Board vote to appoint James Hall to be the Town of Carlisle Department of Public Works Director. Second that motion.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, hearing none, we can do this by a voice vote. Am I correct? Yes. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the appointment is unanimous. Yeah.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
I get to work.
All righty, and then we have a second appointment for the Police Department. Would somebody here like to move that motion? And then we can hear a little more about it if we'd like to.
All right, I move that the Select Board vote to appoint Jose Ramos from Bilbrica Mass to the Carlisle Police Department to serve as a part-time officer pending successful salary negotiations and background check.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. So any discussion? Ryan, do you want to say a few words about this appointment?
Just that this applicant was vetted by our HR Director and our interim Chief of Police to include the Police Department. We're very lucky to have someone who's academy-trained and ready to start on day one. You'll notice the higher rate of pay for the experience level that Jose is bringing. This brings our staff up to an appropriate level of part-timers, which allows us to manage the department while we have a couple vacancies. So strongly recommending Jose, based off the recommendation of Chief Fong, to join our part-time force.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have a quick question. Have we seen his resume previously? Like, I don't see a resume in here. Like, where is he working now? What's his background?
I don't have it, but I can get it for you. One second.
I'm trying to remember if we saw that. Have we seen that one yet? I'm not sure we saw it last time either. Yeah.
I did a quick search. I don't mean to hold it up. We don't have to hold it up.
Yeah.
It's just, in the future, it'd be great just to.
Right. Have that as well.
Do you know where he's working now, Ryan?
I'm just calling up here.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's what I do. It's going to take a minute if we want to skip it and come back.
Why don't we? Just looking to see if there's a short thing. Well, maybe, should we go into the CCA contract, and then we can come back to this? So, thank you both for joining us. Would you like to come up, bring up an extra chair? And you can both sit up here? And you please introduce yourselves. And is, yeah, I see Bob is on the, with us remotely. Hi, Bob. Bob Zog is our volunteer expert.
Is that he is?
Yes, instrumental in this whole process. Thank you, Bob. And I know, David, you joined the group along with Ryan. So how do you want to do this? Bob, do you want to introduce?
I have a presentation.
Or do you have a presentation? How do you, how have you guys thought about putting this forward tonight?
I think they wanted to talk.
So I am happy to deliver a presentation that we put together with David's review.
Okay. Great.
Yes, I'll allow our volunteer power to introduce themselves first. They're here to correct me whenever I make a mistake and fill in any questions I can answer.
Okay, great.
Mark Capital and Colonial Power.
Hi, Denise Sallard, Colonial Power.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome. All right, Bob, do you need us to share a screen? Or is, do you have that, Ryan?
Ryan's coming.
I think I'm all set here. Are you seeing the screen?
Okay. Yep, there you go. Okay.
Great.
Hold on one se- hold on.
I'm bringing over to where we're at.
Hey, Bob, hold on one second. We just want to see if we can get your, your, yeah, there we go. Make it smaller so we could see the whole.
Great.
Presentation. Excellent.
Okay, a little bit of a delay there, okay. I want to bring you up to speed. We spoke a couple of weeks ago about some of this, but I'll just quickly refresh and bring you up to speed on where we are with Community Choice Aggregation. So as a reminder, Massachusetts is one of around 10 states that allows its municipalities to secure independent electricity suppliers on behalf of their communities. And we've been involved for the last four and a half years in the CCA program here in Carlisle. As a reminder, this CCA only affects the supply portion of our electricity bill. There's also a delivery portion plus a meter fee we pay. And Eversource remains the delivery company, and we're charged for delivery on top of the supply. So we completed a two-and-a-half-year contract, and then two years ago, we started our second contract. There's one year remaining in the current contract, and that will wrap up in January of 2024. Denise and Mark just introduced themselves. They're our consultants, also known as brokers, for Colonial Power, and they've been with us for the past four and a half years. And about 70% of our meters in Carlisle are under the CCA. We talked about the three options we have for products under our current contract. And I added here, for comparison purposes, the current supply rate that Eversource basic service customers would be paying. And you can see there's quite a difference. But that 26 cents is a bit of an anomaly. We do expect that to drop down significantly in July. So as of last fall, early winter, about 81% of our meters were on the standard product. That's the product that people get put in unless they opt for one of the other two products. And roughly 82% have opted down to a product that has the same renewable mix as the minimum required in Massachusetts, whereas our standard default product has 15% additional Class One renewable energy certificates compared to what's required. And the optional Green 100, we've got roughly 1% have opted up to that. That is 100% covered with Class One recs. So some information that we haven't really shared in the past, I think it's important. Over the four and a half years that we've been under the CCA, Carlisle has saved over $1.3 million in electricity costs compared to buying through Eversource. And this is on top of the fact that, on average, we're getting a more environmentally sensitive product as well. So that works out to almost $300,000 annual savings and over $190 a year for the average residential meter. Very important, there is no guarantee of future savings. The CCA may even cost us a little more. We can't guarantee that these savings will continue, but the track record is pretty good. As you can see in the table, I don't look for all these numbers, but most of those savings have occurred in the last two years under the new contract. And in 2022, Eversource rates have gone up quite a bit, which is why we saw quite a bit of savings in 2022. And the first half of 2023, we're also going to see very large savings, and those numbers are not included here. So where are we? Colonial Power advised us that we should not wait any longer to at least look at pricing and see what we can do for our new contract in January. I might mention, three years ago, we were working on the current contract. We did not listen to the advice that Colonial Power gave us, and they would have saved us quite a bit of money had we listened. We waited a little too long. So we're trying to be a little more proactive this time around. We'll talk in a second about the indicative pricing that they secured on April 21. And they've also gone out for what's called executable pricing. This pricing we can actually lock in, which is due tomorrow morning, and we will be making some decisions tomorrow with your approval and authorization. And David has asked the Environmental Sustainability Committee if we can help in the remainder of 2023 to communicate to the community about the CCA program, the options available, so that people are ready to take action when the new contract is up. Okay, so this is a very top-level summary of the information that Colonial Power reviewed with us on the 21st. And essentially, we, working with David and Ryan, we decided that we would recommend to you a two-year contract instead of a three-year contract as we currently have. And one of the reasons is, frankly, this pricing is a little bit disappointing compared to what we were hoping for. And collectively, we decided that maybe two years would be a better time window. We're basically talking about the lowest-cost product would be 15 cents roughly, based on the indicative pricing. And that's about 41%, 41% higher than our current product. Now here, for this, for the standard product, I'm showing two lines. And the reason is, is we're recommending a little bit of a shift here in the renewable content of that default product. We're currently at 15% Class One. I say 15%. I should say 15% above the minimum requirement. And we're suggesting we go to 25% above the minimum requirement. And that would be, we're predicting that would be around 16 cents, which again would be about 40% increase, but again, a higher renewable content than we currently have. And then for the optional Green 100, that would be around 18 cents or about an almost 30% increase. Mark and Denise, do you want to make any additional comments about these numbers?
No, no. That sums it up. It's, electricity and energy prices have gone up. That's the bottom line. You've been sheltered from that, but what's coming, it's not nearly as high as you showed you, you know, the Eversource price in the past. It's markedly down from there, but you have pricing from two-plus years ago. So the world has changed from an electricity standpoint tremendously, as you can see.
You could show, Bob, the slide that has the zigzags on it? The timeline of residential pricing? Is that, that's in the back?
Yeah, just let me flip ahead a bit. So this is how the light blue line shows how Eversource basic service pricing has evolved over the time of our two contracts. And the dash horizontal lines represent our prices for the various products we've had. And one of the advantages, I suppose, of the CCA is to get more stability.
Right.
Now, I think in terms of what's happening going forward, Colonial Power is forecasting, based on looking at the pricing that Eversource is likely to have to pay, that Eversource in the first year of our new contract in 2024 will probably be around 15 cents. Okay? And in the second year, 2025, will probably be around 14 cents. So, you know, we're projecting, I think, for the next two years that we're not really going to do any better than Eversource in terms of price. And we're, we might even be, you know, a penny or so higher in 2025.
You may, you guys may want to speak a little to the, what you see as the window. Because that, that goes to the decision to say, I mean, the decision is, there's really four decision points, I think, if I'm correct. We can go for a three-year contract, which we did in the past. We go for a two-year, which we're recommending. We go for a one-year, which means we're right back at it. We can go for a no-year and just kind of ride it out and wait for another pricing window. So why don't you give us a little background on basically not waiting for another pricing window, but also not, you know, like, why is the two-year a sweet spot?
Absolutely. So the reason we're pushing for the two-year currently, we're not at historic lows, as you could see from that graph. We knew we were at historic lows in the past. So let's book it for as long as we can. 36 months out, that's how far capacity, one of the, one of the things that make up energy costs, capacity, well, three years is about as far as you can get suppliers to go. At this point, we don't feel like we're all the way at the bottom. The problem is, is a, we're in choppy waters here, meaning, yep, the market has come down. We don't see it ever coming down here again in the near future. So what we're saying is, is rather than going out to 36 months and taking all of this, all these risk premium and dragging them over 36 months, let's take a little smaller bite. We did discuss what might be a 12-month term. It's a little higher. We thought, okay, with the 24 months, we do continue with the stability, and hopefully there'll be some savings. So right now, I think the only way we can project those numbers is using today's market. That's why they look as favorable as they do for Eversource. If I could only know what Eversource is going to do.
Well, you get a, you get a hint because the, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we request a bid, at least from the data I'm seeing, they drop the price if you extend the term. That means they believe the price is going down, right?
Well, believe it or not, so the curve is actually what we call backdated. So it's actually less expensive for '25 than it is for '24. So when they go out and set their hedge.
Yeah.
They're paying less for the energy.
Right. Right. All of which is to say, the smart money, the people who set those, the market sets it, believe the energy prices are going down, because otherwise, it would be the other way.
That is correct.
Where you'd have, you'd pay a premium for the longer term, because they would see, they'd want to hedge the increase, right?
That is exactly.
So it's likely it will go down. We're not really in the energy market, right? We don't want to be in the energy market. So it's partly economic, and it's partly, do we want to just stabilize, give people a package, not be too much one way or the other? I mean, that's, it's a judgment, right? And I could personally see in a year, but, you know, it means more work. You're just building in more work.
And the one thing I would say is, this is the Towns Program, and the nice thing about aggregation, although the Town sets the rate, the customer gets to decide whether they wish to participate or not. So ultimately, it's, you know, all you're giving them is a choice that they wouldn't otherwise have.
Right. But then it gets, can you go back, Bob, to the pie chart? Because I want to bring in another point. So let's look at that for a second. So this says that, first of all, the baseline is that this represents 70% of the households, right? So seven in 10 have gone with this, right?
Do we know where the other three went?
They just go direct to, I think they mostly.
Either they're still on basic service, or they have a third-party supply.
You get all those mailers, you get all those mailers, do this, do that, right? And it's surely not a good deal.
Yeah.
Be that as it may, 70% have gone with this. But if you analyze this, it says, you know, understandably, maybe there's 18% say, you know, I want the lowest price. Brown, we colored it brown for a reason, right?
Yeah.
I don't care. I don't care, I just want, I want to get it. And a very tiny proportion are actually, and this is really important, because we talk a lot about sustainability and how important it is, and everybody goes to Earth Day, but in the privacy of their homes.
Yeah.
When they have to make an economic decision, and it's a couple pennies, 1% opted for that product, 1%. So in my opinion, it's only my opinion, the biggest bang for the buck is to get the big 81% block, which generally will default to what we recommend, somewhat more green. So if you go back to, Bob, go now to the pricing chart, the indicative pricing, the, no, the one you just, that one, right?
Yeah.
So it was my recommendation, and that's what I'm pitching to you guys, that we actually move the needle a little on the standard. The difference in price, based on the early read, was like a penny. It's very little. But we are pushing, and part of our job, I think, as leaders, is to push a little, to push people who will go with probably the default. They'll say, I want to be green, I don't want the Cadillac green, but I don't want the brown, right? That they will take that. We will do way better, in my opinion, if we move more people, or we take the block of people who's already in the default box and make them greener, than work super hard to try to get the 1% to 2%. It's just a bigger impact on the climate.
Yeah.
But that leads back to the other question, which is, we don't want people to go, we don't want the 70% to go down.
Right.
Because people say, wow, you're giving me a crappy deal this time. I can get better from Eversource. So it's somewhat of a delicate balance, you know, to make sure that we have the trust of people that we've done due diligence, we're trying to do a good deal. And by the way, this, this product is pretty, Bob, maybe you could speak to, because, I mean, I've heard you speak about it. There's a lot of numbers, but basically, you're, what percent of mass class-two, is it class?
One.
Class-one rec are you getting in the middle one, if we go to the 25% model?
I'm getting.
Yeah, sorry, David, the audio is a little weak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you get closer to the mic and report?
Well, I'm pretty close to the mic. I'll be swallowing it if I get closer. But the standard default at RPS plus 25%, how many actual, what percent Class One recs?
It's 24 plus 25.
Is it 24 plus 25? So 49. So half of it is, maybe you could just give a few words about what Class One rec is, so people understand. Maybe they'll do, but.
Sure, I'll give you, I'll give you my view. I think that there's a number of mandated requirements of these various recs in Massachusetts. And I think it's generally felt that the Massachusetts Class One requirement is the most important in terms of environmental benefit. It represents the newest renewable assets that are in New England, much of it in Massachusetts, not necessarily all of it. And some of the other requirements are either for technologies that may be a little less green, includes trash incineration, for example, converted power, and also it includes the Class Two recs, for example, are mostly hydropower that's been around for decades. And once those assets are built, they continue to be used. So the real important thing is which recs stimulate new investment in renewables. And that's really, in terms of environmental benefit, that's what you look for. And that's why we focus on the Massachusetts Class One requirements.
Maybe we should pause, though, and see if there are any other questions so far from board members.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Remember the mic, Nathan, if you would.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if I were to just go directly to Eversource, and I think you said this number, but it's not here, so I don't remember it. If I were just to go directly to Eversource, what would the cost be right now?
It's around 25 cents a kilowatt hour until July 1st.
Okay. And then what happens on July 1st?
They're going to go out to bid again in May, and then they're, they're going to mix that with a buy that they had in December, or November, excuse me, November. And then they'll, they'll calculate a new price. We're probably thinking they're probably going to be, so everyone right now is going to be in that column that says current price. They'll probably still be under by 4 cents. Maybe they're going to be 14, 15 cents. National Grid just did it, and they're at 14, 115. They didn't have a very good buy.
So dropping from 25 to 14.
14, 15, somewhere in that range. Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
And that's important, Nathan, because this, even though we're deciding now, we're not rolling it out till.
January.
January. So there'll be plenty of time. Eversource can update it. We have to lock in, right? They don't. They can, I think they can pretty much do in.
Well, they have a certain schedule, but their rates will change on July 1st and again on January 1st.
Right. So when people look at this, and we get, when they get the mailers, I guess, from you guys about choosing, they'll probably have a lower price point. So that is a real risk. And I don't know.
I don't think this winter, they'll be below those prices, just given the current market.
Yeah, that's the other thing, to talk about that. There's a seasonality to this window, right?
Yeah, and the main driver in New England is de Jan, February, December, January, February months. And they have two of those in there. But they only have, and then they have March, April, May, June as well, that's the six months. You're going to have the full 24 months, a full average. So I expect in the winter months, they'll be above you. I think maybe in the summer months, there's a chance that they may be below. But I say that tongue-in-cheek, because I have no idea. Honestly, I never thought the rates would be at 25 cents. And if Mr. Putin decides that he's had enough of, you know, treading water here, does he start doing something?
Yeah, that's right.
Extra stupid.
You do lock in. That's another good point. I mean, there is a de-risk element to locking in, right? And that's worth something, so.
The risk could go the other way, though.
It could go.
100%. He walks away, right? We all seen Kumba. One hundred percent. He walks away, right? We all seen Kumbaya, and then we might see a completely, you know, he starts supplying Europe with natural gas again. I don't think.
Somehow, I don't think that's going to happen.
I agree with you, but I'm just saying, if one of those scenarios happened, you could see things changing. I don't, I don't read the tea leaves the exact same way, but I'll tell you this, it is a possibility.
So, what's driving it down for July? What's driving it from twenty-five to fifteen?
So, again.
We still have the Ukraine thing.
True. So, natural gas has come down. We had an extremely warm winter, both in Europe and here, and LNG has come down. So, we don't really need to backfill our system up here in New England for the summer. And that's their summer, July through December. They have one high month, just the December. The rest of it is not really anywhere from a natural gas perspective. The biggest issue we have is when we get into December, January, and February, supplying natural gas, and how we meet those needs now, through LNG. And what happened last winter was, they would have paid any amount of money to fill up their natural gas in Europe, because they were getting shut off. They were going to get frozen out. And we compete with them or LNG.
Global market, right.
Unfortunately. So, that was the driver that just, nobody ever saw it coming.
Basically, I mean, heating season is the driver, right?
Correct.
That's when the high part will be, and now we're in the low part. So, I mean, we can't, I guess, all which is to say, we can't handicap this much more than these guys have done, which is pretty good. We're going to be plus or minus a penny off of Eversource. And that's all, I don't know enough about the psyche of people. Is the default, if they're already on the standard default, and they don't do anything, they just automatically.
They'll automatically move to the twenty-five percent.
There is an inertia effect that people will just do nothing, and they'll get the same. The difference, by the way, I just looked again, the difference between going with like the plus fifteen and the plus twenty-five is out another decimal place. In other words.
Oh, yeah.
It rounds to sixteen cents either way. So, we get kind of ten percent more greenness, if you will, for like zero dollars. So, I think that's worth doing.
Well, it looked like you tightened your band, you know? It used to be going from eleven-point-four-five to thirteen was twenty-one percent increase, and people would say, geez, that's a lot more to pay for that. Now, it's going from sixteen to eighteen.
That's a separate, you're bringing up a different point. So, the first point is, if we were to price out, and we don't, we believe that giving people more than three options, they'll kind of, their eyeballs will glaze. So, trying to stick with three options, you got to give them the default. You got to give them the operational basic. There seems to be a lot of sentiment to make sure that there is a hundred percent option if somebody wants it. So, it leaves you with one middle choice. I'm just saying, the two middles, if you were to look at the price, you'd have to go out another decimal point at least to see a difference. So, they're kind of the same. Then to your point, Travis, you can see that the hundred percent has come down in price, right? Wind's getting cheaper, solar's getting cheaper, twenty-nine percent instead of forty percent price increase.
Is it coming down, or is it being subsidized through the people paying like more in the fifteen cents?
No, those recs here for the optional green are actually a little bit more economical than they have been in the past. Down around thirty-eight dollars a rec from forty-seven, when we went out the last time, maybe forty-five, depending on market conditions when they purchased.
Good.
I just fear that no matter what we do here, we're going to lose people in the program. More people will get out of the program just because of the cost.
The one thing I will say, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but people are making a choice. Meaning, that's what aggregation is fully about. Meaning, you've educated, and they're able to make a decision, and they say, hey, I guarantee you they'll come back to the program. The savings right now, and again, I know exactly how this works. No one in town realizes what you've done. When they're going to realize what you've done is going to be February of 2024, when they get their bill. It's going to be increased by, you know, remember, this is forty percent in the supply side, not forty percent on the total bill.
Right. But the people who didn't opt in are paying, if some are paying twenty-five cents a kilowatt hour right now, so.
Yeah, or maybe more if they're on third-party supply.
Right, so they could save money.
The question is, where do you think they're going to go? I mean, go back to Eversource, you know? They're either, they'll drop down to basic, which is still in the program, or they'll go to Eversource, right?
Yeah, well, and I still think all of these choices will be under next winter, given today's market conditions.
Well, and optional basic is still, goes up every year, right? Is at the bottom, twenty-four to twenty-seven to thirty, right?
Right.
That's the renewable content.
I mean, even if you go for the most basic, you have to, you will be forced into more renewables over the years.
Six, absolutely correct. I mean, that's the one everyone's following, but the Department of Energy Resources says that even the standard product, or, you know, the base product is sixty percent renewable now. Now, not everyone likes all the renewables. There's some wood burning and trash, as Bob mentioned, but they consider those renewable energies. So, in total, there's sixty percent, and even if you have the basic product, according to the D O E R, you're getting a sixty percent renewable product. Just so everyone understands.
Tonight, we have, we were looking for a vote, so that if there's pricing tomorrow, we can go ahead.
Kate, did you have some other questions?
No, some of them have been answered. One of them, of course, was like, if there's only seventy where the other thirty, if seventy percent were the other thirty percent, I really hope they're at some third party and not just stuck at Eversource, because that's really not good for them, because we can give them the same product as Eversource, same crummy product, but way.
So, here's, so let me, I'm glad you brought that up, because this is really my thing, is, we're going to do this now, because timing dictates it. The actual rollout is six, seven months from now. I would like the E S C to make this a very important part of their.
Education.
Educational campaign to get more people on. I think if what Nathan is predicting happens, it's a failure by us and by the E S C not to educate people as to what we're doing. What?
I don't, I don't know. So, that was, that was one of my things. And the second thing is that, although I know it says plus-ten and plus-twenty-five percent of the class-one recs, I want to reiterate that the other, it's not that, it's not green, though. It's not as brown as the other one, because the rest of that, what, we've got up to what, fifty or sixty percent? The other forty is still green, it's still from renewables, and I don't want that message to get lost. It's not, maybe it's nice renewables, but it's, you know.
Yeah, so sixty, sixty percent in two thousand twenty-four will be sixty percent renewable. According to the D O E Rs, there are many people that don't, that's correct.
Shades of green.
It's just shades of green. Some people don't consider.
We're not just burning coal, I guess, that's fair to say.
Certainly none of that. That's correct.
Right. That's, so, and I think that's still important, you know?
Agreed.
I mean, I, yeah, I don't want to say, never mind. Edit myself.
Well, part of the, I believe, having gone through this with Bob, and these guys helped educate me, it's not a simple concept about the class-one recs and why that's really the preferred alternative. And if you are taking hydro and you're patting yourself on the back, because it's green, well, hydro's been around.
Yeah, but it's green. So what?
It's green, but it's green anyway. The point is, somebody somewhere has to make up the energy gap. And if you take a product that somebody else would use, then the energy gap's going to eventually be filled by LNG or something else. The point is, when you actually make an effort to purchase class-one rec, you are moving the needle of total supply and total demand. Listen to what Mark said. Like, we're competing with like the Europeans, right? We are pushing to get more renewables. That's how, I'm not saying it that well, but that's where I'd like to see the E S C really use some creativity to get that message. It's not a simple concept.
It is not.
Right.
But it's very important. Like, home energy use is one of the biggest users. And by the way, if you're driving electric, like the three of us are, this is you. We're that electric. How you fill your gas tank is that.
Right, exactly.
I agree, yeah.
Bob, do you think that's a reasonable request to ask the E S C to play a significant role in trying to get information out and, you know, do everything possible to explain to people why this is a good thing to do?
Well, understanding that I don't speak for the E C S, E S C, I should say, it seems reasonable, and I don't know, frankly, if there's anyone else in a position to do it. But we will, now that we've got our major Earth Day event behind us, you know, maybe we can focus on some other things, and this would be one of them. So, yes, I'll definitely bring it up with the E S C and talk about strategically how we want to message and what the right timing is. But it seems like a reasonable thing to ask of us to me.
Good. Other questions? Did you have more you wanted to go through in the slides, Bob? Are we ready to?
No, that was, unless there's something you wanted to go over in the appendix, that's all I had to present. And I guess the main thing we're asking is just to confirm that you want to authorize Ryan and David to act tomorrow, based on their judgment. Once we get the executable pricing, basically how it works is we'll get that, Colonial Power will get that executable pricing in the morning, and by sometime before one o'clock, they're going to deliver that to us. We're going to review it and make a decision with your authorization to either move ahead or to say, hey, something went weird between the indicative and the executable, and we don't think we should move ahead now. That's unlikely, but it's possible.
Okay. So, it seems appropriate to have a motion, then?
Well, I'll read the motion that's in the packet. I move to authorize the town administrator to accept or reject at his discretion, April twenty-six, twenty-two-three, executable pricing for the next community choice aggregation contract.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been seconded. Any more discussion?
I just wanted to thank the entire team, Bob, you in particular, and David, and, you know, everyone who really put a thorough analysis together to really help us. And I also think, just as my own opinion on this, I mean, I think it's great that, you know, we're kind of going towards the environmental stewardship. We're working towards that, but we're giving people a choice. But the default is, you know, something that is really reasonable. You can then, for a little bit more, you know, go a hundred percent green, or if you want, you can, you know, opt out, and hopefully people don't opt out if they, but they have the freedom to do so. So, I think it's great.
Good.
And thank you, Travis. And I should, I neglected to mention Sue Thomas and Glenn Reed. Were part of this advisory group that Ryan appointed, so they deserve the credit as well. But thank you.
Yeah, you really have done an amazing job for the town. We really appreciate that. All right, let's take a roll, I mean, a voice vote, please. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. Yeah, thank you all very much.
We'll be in touch tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay. Bye-bye now. Look at us, we are way ahead of schedule. Okay.
We have to go back to the.
So.
Yeah, were you able to find?
Madam Chair, before that, the fans in the crowd are saying, the select board members that are following David's example and getting close to the mic, they can hear, and those that aren't, they can't, so.
Okay. So, we got to swallow the mic, as David said.
I experienced that when I was remote.
Yes.
Same thing.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Same thing.
I would say probably if we're not hearing our voices amplified here, that means it's not going through either.
We might look into mics, but different day.
Okay, thank you. We'll try to do our best, those that are listening remotely. All right, so let's go back, if this is a good time, Ryan, to take a look at the resume for Jose Ramos.
Yeah, I apologize for this not being in the packet. That was an oversight on my part. So, Jose lives in Billerica, has been a Chelsea police officer since nineteen ninety-two, has a tremendous amount of experience. I did send you his resume. Also, on his personal side, has a long history of mixed martial arts instruction, and then in his training and other qualifications, has a lot of extra police training, which is something that police officers have to volunteer for. It shows initiative. In addition to the work he does in his personal life, looks like he coaches and is heavily involved in MMA. So, these are the reasons why the chief is recommending Jose join our force, mostly due to his experience and his ability to step right in and serve as an officer in our community.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments about that, this position?
Is he retired? Is that?
He is not.
He's not a retired officer, but he's going to work part-time. Okay.
Yeah. So, we do not have a motion on the floor for this position, so.
No, we did. And we had a second as well.
Okay. So, then, are there any more comments or discussion? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead then by a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. Welcome to Jose Ramos. All righty, so I bet Scott is not with us yet, because we're, goodness, we are thirty-five minutes early.
Keep going.
Okay.
Why don't we do town administrator?
Yeah. Is that good for you, Ryan? We'll go to the town administrator's report?
Yes.
And I know there are three motions in that one. And that, if you've got a packet, it's, where everything's together, it's page seventy-four. Okay. So, do you want to start with your report, and then we'll come back to the motions, Ryan?
Yeah, I'll just go through it.
Okay, great.
That's good for everyone. So, in terms of town hall and events, I just want to highlight how much work Jen's been doing, and you may have noticed she's been running up and down. If you stop by, trying to get the phone system ready for installation, it requires a lot of legwork. It'll be worth it in the end, but she's been spearheading that project for us, making sure that all the I T design and other intricacies necessary in coordination with our I T department and Scott at the school I T department is good. Some examples of that are, the brick building is our recreation office. That's both school and town, if you think about it that way. So, figuring out those final details. But we're still on track for a mid-May install and test. If you noticed, in the hallway, the plaques are down. That's because Al is just painting everything he can. So, those will all go back up in a more organized fashion. So, all of that will be put back and is not a change to the town hall, for sure. And then, upcoming projects, the Fishbowl rooms are still on track for late May and June, working on our land use filing project in June as well. And then, going out for procurement this week for cubicle insulation, it'll be two phases, from the assessors department through the planning department is phase one, and then when we have enough room, we'll do phase two with the land use records project following. Lastly, we'll be making some recommendations for the decoration of this space to include, maybe inviting students to participate, and then some historical decoration as well, just to make town hall, town hall. Aubrey and I also joined many of you at Route to Sustainability Day. I thought it was, it was pretty inspiring. It was a tremendous event. There was a ton of people here. I saw a screech owl, which was pretty cool. I've never seen a screech owl in person before. The level of volunteerism in that event and the ability to connect people to, you know, what I would consider reasonable, sustainable practices was evident. And I think that everyone went, got something out of it. My wife talked me out of taking the kids, because of some other arrangements. I wish they had come, they would have had a great time. So, well done by all the people involved. You could tell the level of work that was there, and I'm looking forward to next year. For human resource updates, you know that we have Chief Soros' contract in this packet. I'm able to tell you and have sent you that now Chief Amendola has accepted our offer, contingent on some final details of contract negotiation. So, we're moving ahead with background checks and other items that will likely result in the chief starting on May tenth, pending the rest of, the I's and T's we have to complete. So, that's really good news for the town. He's a really strong candidate and has a lot of energy and ideas, and we're ready to start moving on from the interim phase into the more permanent phase with our new chief. We'll make sure that Chief Fong is properly honored, too, for his long six months here, as he would put it. And then, dispatch negotiations are continuing. They're moving along well. We've entered the final stage of that, so we should have some updates for you, if not at your next meeting, the meeting following, and plenty of time for the end of the fiscal year, including signing a contract with them and having that all set up before the new fiscal year begins. Gary, Jim, and Aubrey have been interviewing candidates for the driver laborer positions. We should have something for that soon. And we've gotten a ton of candidates and applicants for Carol's now open position in the social services manager slot. So, we expect to have a high-quality candidate brought before you for appointment really soon, in the next two weeks. Lexington has, in conjunction with us in Bedford, Aubrey being our representative there, has put forth a candidate for veteran services director. So, this position should be filled, pending negotiation and other final details. This is a position we share, so it is a Lexi- This is a position we share, so it is a Lexington hire. We did have input in it, but we will have a permanent, full-time VSO soon. We have been receiving coverage and have had our veterans being assisted by the assistant director who works in Bedford. And then Kelly, and Kelly, to a great extent, and Aubrey to a smaller extent, have been working on implementing our Bamboo HR platform. This is going to start rolling out next week, so you should see some, this should be something you see soon in terms of reporting and other data we have on things like accruals and payroll and efficiencies in the pay process. Moving on to finance, the House Ways and Means Committee finalized their version of the state budget. So this is the halfway point of the state budget process. We saw a $15,000 increase in our aid. This isn't a final budget, so I'm recommending we stay with the House One Recommendation for Town Meeting, especially since the Senate has yet to weigh in on this budget. Interestingly, they stopped, they lowered unrestricted government aid, which is rare for House Ways and Means to do that, so it went from 2% to 1.6. However, the minimum school contribution for a student in a whole harmless community like Carlisle went from $30 a student to $60, which made up the bulk of the increase. Everything else stayed relatively flat. If we were to realize more money in the state aid process, this would help either lower the tax rate or increase free cash in FY '25. In terms of procurement, Jim and I held a very productive pre-bid meeting for the road repair project. This includes repairing Patch Meadow Lane, Pine Brook Road, Rutland Street, and East Street. Based on the recommendation of contractors and our evaluation, we added milling to the Rutland Street project. We think this would be a good investment of a small amount of dollars in order to make that a more level project. We also included some details that would allow the bidding to be more accurate in average leveling cost, which is something that the pre-bid process is supposed to help us with. We have the money to cover this. We have to spend our RAP dollars by June 30th. All the contractors know that in terms of bidding. We'll be opening the sealed bids on Thursday, so should have a report for you by the end of the week on who's going to be doing that work for us this spring.
Is it, it's all in one? One vendor does all of it?
Yeah, one shot, one project. I'll be coming to you later this summer with a proposal for three years' worth of paving from one bidder on more on-call basis, but we wanted to get this project done so we could take advantage of those RAP dollars in the spring.
What's RAP?
The Winter Recovery Assistance Program.
What percent is that of?
So instead of increasing Chapter 90, they.
Gave you RAP.
Gave us RAP, which is a newer program. It's $180,000 to Carlisle.
Because you got to use it.
By June 30th.
Okay, cool. We'll spend it.
Well, and I, on the aptly named Rutland Street.
When I first moved here, it was absolutely terrible. And then it was great for a little while, and now it's pretty close to where it was when I first moved here. So definitely, I support milling, living on East Street and Rutland corner.
It's over a mile, so it should be a good chunk of repair. Julie's been working to procure GIS services. I assisted her a little, but she's been managing that project. So this would be layers of GIS for the town, a project identified in the master plan. And for many on the land use side, it would be extremely helpful moving forward. So this includes hosting the GIS and then including various layers, like local layers. One of the layers that we'll be proposing to you soon is a road prioritization layer, which would show you in color form what roads should be prioritized. Doesn't mean that you have to follow that, it's just another data point for you to use. So this would be the type of layer that residents could turn on. We could put it on the website, and they could see where their roads rank based on a third-party evaluation, not just the opinion of officials or staff.
Is that prioritization for like snow plowing order or for repair?
Repair.
Repair.
It's a road condition. It's going to take, it's going to take into account things like traffic count, the quality of the pavement, the cost of the repair. And then, when you're doing projects like this, the proximity of the roads would make for cheaper projects because you don't have to move the equipment around. So there's a lot of variables into how you would approach road management. All of this road talk fits well into our current Chapter 90 funding, so it wouldn't require any additional taxes or any funding like that. We'll bring you a full plan, a five-year plan, that might demonstrate a need for more investment or not, depending on how town officials want to go. But we're not ready for that. That's going to be after Jim and I get going on the summer planning process. Cranberry Bog water rights is something I know about now. So the DEP sent Carlisle a formal notice saying that we continue to have rights to the cranberry bog water. This would supply the ability to have a cranberry bog functioning there if we so choose. This right is extended to 2033, so is one of many things that Sylvia stays on top of for the town. Much appreciation to her. The MAPC Technical Assistance Grant we got, this is a shared services study, a $7,500 grant I referenced with you last time. We've sent the contact information for our department heads to start working on this. You should see this group coming before you sometime in June, and they will be talking to you about services that you may or may not want to share or may or may not want them to investigate for the next phase of the study, which would be, okay, now that a town like Carlisle does this with that type of program, do we want to investigate it further? So part of that three-phase look at shared services and regionalization options. We'll get to this in the action items, but Julie's looking for a MVP Grant Letter of Support. She's putting together through her working group a grant application that would help look for best practices in land use policies, regulations, and bylaws. This is again, an item identified by the master plan, something that we would be using a grant for to advise on changes or other considerations we should look at with our policies and bylaws to help us be more resilient in terms of climate change and our vulnerabilities moving forward. So a study to focus our energies on things to do in order to fix capital, infrastructure, and other areas of town. This would be a $60,000 grant that would help us conduct that study. Barney was there today, but we met with the Bingham Road and Palmer Way sidewalk group. This has been discussed in previous iterations of the board. I was introduced to it today. We were able to bring our house doctor-on-call engineer to provide us with a very quick snippet of what the cost would be, and this will come to the board. They've requested to meet with you to discuss their projects. This would be an extension of a sidewalk that exists to Palmer Way in order to accommodate some traffic there. Interestingly, this was also identified in the Complete Streets prioritization plan for a sidewalk that would go from Bingham Street all the way to, is it street or road? I always get that wrong.
Road.
Bingham Road, all the way to the town line, which is a much bigger project. So we want to put that project in, well, in priority order for you so that you can make both a big or small decision or no decision, depending on what you want to do. We received notice from the planning board that they unanimously support the Maple Street and Curve Street Bridge projects. This is mostly guardrails, but that's another hurdle that needs to be done before we can procure the safety improvements. This is also reviewed heavily by the Trails Committee, and they have weighed in and made sure that the trails that run through that area are open and available for use, even after the safety improvement is completed. So I thought that was good collaboration.
We, is that part of that bridge? Have we authorized that already?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just a matter of getting it done, right?
Two or three years ago, we started this.
Been a while.
Yeah. This has been a while.
But is it going to need more money now, or just a matter of getting it done?
No, it's just a matter of getting the permitting.
Taking things off to get it done. Should be procuring it, hopefully by the end of the spring. And then, in your packet, but not ready for discussion yet, just your review is the TSAC Local Holler Policy Recommendation. You've seen this in various recommendations, but the actual policy is in your packet for your review. This will be coming to you on May 9th for a decision. So this is a phased-in approach towards providing regulations to local haulers to make sure they're complying with state standards and local efforts to increase recycling and making sure that we're not increasing our tipping fees based off of ways that people get rid of trash. It'll be very thorough on May 9th, so just review that. And if you have any questions ahead of time, we'd love to get them to Tom and group. So for the action items, if the.
Before you go to action items, did you cover the Bedford Lexington? Did I miss it, the 225?
No, you didn't.
Are you, you going to cover any action items then?
Yes.
Okay.
Number three. Number one is Julie's looking for a letter of support from the board. So this would be your support of the Application Grant to Study Climate Resilience Best Practices as it relates to land use policies, regulations, and bylaws. We have a draft of the letter ready to go. That is the language it includes, and it would be signed by the chair in order to support the grant.
Why don't we just go ahead and do that one then? Would somebody make that motion, please?
I move to support the planning board's application for an action grant studying climate resilience best practice as it relates to land use policies, regulations, and bylaws, and further vote to authorize the chair or town administrator to draft a letter of support on behalf of the select board.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. So is this, we're not allocating any money to this. This is just setting our priorities, to say, hey, we want you to go out and, you know, seek this grant? Is that essentially what?
Well, we went through a process, maybe before you were on the board, with the municipal vulnerability program?
MVP.
And do you recall that?
Not to be confused with the most valuable player.
Right. No, when we identified all those things. And I think the fire chief presented to us at one meeting about some of the areas.
Right, and so this is.
Why we're voting on it as a select board? I mean, I thought this was already in the works and.
Well, it sounds like.
Voting to authorize the letter, saying that you agree that we should apply for this grant. It makes the grant stronger.
Great, okay. That's what I wondered.
All right.
I just wondered why we're doing it.
Yeah, it's just good. Okay, then let's do this by roll call vote. Although, I mean, by voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, this motion carries unanimously. And the next motion.
I move to support the use of the town common and to have a member of the select board to read the annual proclamation designating the second Sunday in June as Race Amity Day in the town of Carlisle.
And so I think many of us, maybe all of us, have been to a Race Amity Day in the past. And this is, once again, they're putting together a really nice event.
I need a second.
Say, oh, sorry. Yes, may I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions about Race Amity Day? We can come back to the which member of the board is interested in being there to read the proclamation, but.
Because we have to also talk about the 29th Memorial Day as well, so.
Yeah, that's, actually, we have a volunteer for that.
Oh, you go, good.
But while we're, but while we're on this motion then, is there anything more, Ryan, that you wanted to say on this motion, or should we go ahead and, we can go ahead and take a vote?
Just that, what a great event to support.
Yes.
Also, they're requesting to post a sign on the rotary and at town hall. In addition to the use of the common and your, one of your presences to present.
Yeah, and I didn't have a chance to respond to Gina, but we're happy to vote to approve the, putting a sign on the rotary, but typically, a group just goes directly to town hall to Jen and gets approval to put a sign up on the rotary, and similarly at town hall. But if we, if there are no more questions, though, let's go ahead and do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the final motion is the.
I move to authorize the chair or town administrator to prepare a letter from the Carlisle Select Board in support of the town of Lexington's restructuring project of Route 4 and Route 225 at the interchange around Bedford Street, Hartwell Avenue area, and Route 128.
Second.
Thank you. Any, do you want to describe this a little bit, Ryan?
Just that Lexington has been on the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement List, for a while for this project. They believe it's of regional significance in order to bring people to the area and help with the flow of traffic. They are asking that, this has also been vetted through the Complete Streets process, which I think is an important detail. They are asking for this letter and other letters in order to increase the visibility of their project because it can be difficult to move up that list.
So I'm looking at the PowerPoint that you linked, and is that in Bedford or Lexington? I guess it must be in Lexington, right? But I think of it as Bedford. All the pictures I've seen look like Bedford.
Hartwell Avenue is Lexington.
It is.
Yep.
And is Bedford playing any role in this? Because there's awful, a lot of the congestion is on the Bedford side.
Yes, so they've been going back and forth on this project. Sarah, before she was no longer the town manager, was trying to organize a letter around this, but they have been communicating about the project.
I mean, does one town need to lead? Is that the idea? Or does each town have responsibility for the piece of the project within its own?
Border.
Borders.
Usually, tip is a one-town project, even though you would.
Like, does the improvement stop at the border?
It does in this project.
Okay. Okay. So I guess, I mean, what's Bedford doing? That's really the question. They're going to have, it just moves the bubble if it's, if Bedford isn't improved.
I don't know what Bedford believes about the project.
So we're asked to support it because just generally, it's better than, say, supporting something that's in Cape Cod for us, right? It's more beneficial to us to clean that up.
Yeah, to our residents being nearby, yeah, being in.
I'm sure all of us use that route to get to Route 128.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it. It just seems weird that they wouldn't package it because it's a continuum of stuff, right? And part of the reason I ask is our favorite bridge project.
Right.
Because eventually, I mean, it's like any chain, it's only as strong as the weakest link, right? The bridge goes out, it doesn't matter what you've done down in the Lexington side, you ain't getting there, right? So it just seems kind of odd, that's all.
I'm sure when we're working on our bridge, we'll be asking similar favors from Lexington.
Yeah.
And we did some work on that today. I'm just not ready to intelligently talk about it.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this? All right, then, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Can I just go back to one thing? And that's, you know, where, Ryan, you were talking about the $7,500 grant that we got approved last night. I got a text, actually, from Simon Cataldo saying, congratulations on the $7,500. And then he said, my budget amendment for Carlisle's auditorium lighting.
I was going to ask this guy here.
Made it into the House budget. Voting it, on it momentarily, but then I haven't gotten an update on that, so I'm.
Well, he said he voted it. They voted it.
They voted it. Well, I didn't get an update. Did you, so did they vote it?
That came to me today as well.
Made it into the House budget, oh, voting on it momentarily.
That was last night.
Okay, and then.
He says we just voted on it.
So the House did.
It passed?
The House did approve, but it hasn't gone through the Senate yet.
Wait, so this is a, an amendment to cover the cost of the auditorium lighting?
$20,000.
$20,000, okay.
Well, hey.
Hey, yeah.
Better than a book in the nose.
Twenty thousand for something else.
This is what I was trying to find out, how much were we talking? The full 250,000 or, okay.
Okay.
All right, all right.
All right.
All right.
Interesting. Okay, are we ready to move on then, to go back to where we are in our agenda, Ryan? Or anything more?
Just have one more quick note here. I just want to thank Gretchen. So Gretchen has been organizing the website and creating permissions for people to post and standards and other things that will allow us to message better through the website and make sure things are accurate. So we've deemed her the website czar, and everything's been moving through her, but she is retraining everyone to make sure that this runs smoothly. That's not in her job description. She's done it because she cares about the town and likes to do a good job. So many thanks to Gretchen for that work. She has been singularly posting things on the website for the majority of the town while I froze it to make sure that we could do these standards. So thank you to her.
That's great.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Chris Guines, also from our health department. So I met with a local contractor today to talk about septic and septic policy in town, and he went out of his way to say that Chris was very responsive, supportive, and helped him through the process, answered questions, and went above and beyond. So even in a situation where this contractor was talking about ways that they believe that we could improve as a town, went out of their way to say the professionalism of the staff is high. So I wanted to thank Chris for her attentiveness and her professionalism. And then, I don't know if you want to go over the agenda now or later.
Why don't we come back to that since Scott is here? Yeah. One thing before we do go to ARPA is just back on the Race Amity Day, Gina Fox, who, you know, is one of the lead organizers, has asked if there is a select board member who would be interested in reading the proclamation about declaring that Sunday Race Amity Day in the town of Carlisle. And I've done it for the past two years. I'm planning to go again, but I am happy to pass that honor on to someone else as well, if anyone is interested.
Interested, but I'm away on the second Sunday, and I can't.
Okay. It's the, what's the second Sunday?
11th.
June 11th.
Oh. It's, right?
It says here, second Sunday.
I can't. So first Sunday is the fourth, second is the 11th, I think.
Oh, here, I can check mine because I, yeah.
So the 11th and the fourth?
I'll check.
Well, the first Sunday is the fourth, so second Sunday is the 11th.
Right. Yeah, it's the 11th. That's when I have it down. We don't, you don't have to decide right now. Why don't we?
I may be able to.
Okay, why don't we sit tight for a little bit on that one, and we can, we can check back in at our May meeting. And then the other thing I wanted to just say is that, to thank Travis for agreeing to be the, excuse me, the Select Board Representative for the Memorial Day Celebration and play that leadership role. So thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Alrighty, so let's go back to the agenda item for the ARPA requests and approvals. And Scott Triola is here with us. Thank you, Scott. And Kate, of course, is a member of that committee. So John Kaufman.
I will be recusing myself from all discussions, and this has not been a posted ARPA meeting. And I did attend the new open meeting law, et cetera, et cetera.
That was really good.
That was excellent.
Clearly, I can't deliberate.
All right. Good. Thank you. Hi, Scott.
Hello. So the ARPA committee met yesterday, and we reviewed the five items that had been flagged as part of the fiscal '24 budget planning process for ARPA funds. Just as you recall, we met probably a month, maybe a little more than a month ago, to talk about how much ARPA funds we wanted to contribute to the fiscal '24 budget, how much we wanted to keep in reserve. And at that time, there was agreement about kind of the mid-tier approach where we'd keep around $300,000 in ARPA funds remaining. And so through that, we had identified and discussed five items that were part of the fiscal '24 budget planning process. And I reached out to the sponsors of those projects so that we could get the requests in and move them through the formal approval process in a timely manner in conjunction with town meetings. So we met yesterday, and on page three, there's actually a summary of the five items, and I'll just briefly walk through them. The first item is the chart of accounts update.
Scott, hold on one second, if you wouldn't mind. Can we put up on the screen the list that we have in our packet, just so folks that are on remotely can see what we're talking about?
Okay.
Thank you.
The first item is the chart of accounts update and expansion. This was formally going to be an article in the warrant. It was supported by FinCom. I don't know what position you took on it, but that was one of the items that we thought would be well-served using ARPA funds. So that's the first item that we, the ARPA committee voted in support of, $40,000. The second item was the Carlisle Public School Grant Elevator Modernization. That's necessary work that needs to be done on the grant elevator to upgrade it, keep it in good working order, and avoid any catastrophic environmental events. Again, that was 100, I think it was originally 140,000 even. We have an actual quote on that of $140,480. The third item was the Carlisle Public School Waste Water Treatment Plant M U A. And I don't remember what the M U A stands for, but it's basically an HVAC air movement system that's required for the proper functioning of the wastewater treatment plant. There are two units in there that are both past end-of-life, can't be maintained and need to be replaced. There's an actual quote for that work, and that's the $58,362. I believe that was originally pegged at $60,000. There's also the Carlisle Public School Refrigerator Freezer R T Us. This would be replacing the R T Us that are used in the kitchen, the walk-in freezer and refrigerator. Again, those are both past end-of-life. They use R12 refrigerant, can't be recharged using that. $40,000 to replace those. And the final item was the DPW sand body, which would be used with the dump truck. So if the dump truck were to be approved at town meeting, the $40,000 would be used to purchase the sand body. There's a quote for $27,000. There's an additional request for $13,000 for some installation work that needs to happen. And also, the request to define this in such a way that if the dump truck comes in a little bit above what's approved, the $180,000 in the capital requirements article, that up to, you know, maybe $5,000 to $10,000 could be used to complete that funding. Because obviously, if it were to go above the amount approved in the article, we wouldn't be able to fund it. This would give us the flexibility to do that. So those are the five items. These are essentially what we had discussed. The numbers are what we had discussed. The ARPA committee reviewed and approved all these items. And if you look at the big picture, coming into today, we had $670,000 in uncommitted ARPA funds. If these are all approved, we would have $350,000 left. We're going to be doing a more comprehensive view of actual expenditures on the approved articles. In looking at them briefly, there's probably a little bit of money to be reclaimed across some of them. The big question mark remains the Wilkins HVAC system, which is still undetermined. If you recall, we had approved funding for $30,000 in engineering study. The $187,000 turned into $540,000 for the project. That's obviously a non-starter for the ARPA funds. But they're talking right now with Guardian and the Green Communities Act. So Guardian thinks it actually can be done for the, closer to the 190, and they believe there might be grant funding for that. So my hope is in the next 60 days, we can get final clarity on that. And if we can't use ARPA funds, at that point, we would probably look to reclaim that and then redeploy those resources. So that's what you have in front of you tonight. The specific motions and votes and proposed motions for you are the first two pages.
M U A is makeup air.
Makeup air. I always forget that.
And I just want to add that all of those projects fit the ARPA criteria that we originally set out and that you guys, the select board approved, that we would be looking for one-time expenses, not expenses or projects that would not commit the town to ongoing operational budgetary items and that would have something, if possible, to do with the COVID and make, you know, with air quality and things like that, so.
And these, I would classify all as necessary maintenance and purchases. This isn't discretionary in my mind, these expenditures. And again, they've all been, these were all part of the budget process. So at least from a FinCom standpoint, these have all been kind of reviewed and known to be flagged for ARPA funds and part of that review process.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Shall we move through them, then, one by one? Can we do them all together?
I think we should do them one by one.
One by one, okay. Thank you, Nathan.
I move that the select board approves $40,000 in ARPA funds to be used to update and expand the town general ledger chart of accounts.
Second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
And one abstention from Kate Reed.
I move that the select board approves $140,480 in ARPA funds to be used to modernize the CPS grant elevator.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Kate Reed. And any nays? All right, this.
I move that the select board approves $58,362 in ARPA funds to remove and replace the CPS wastewater treatment plant makeup air units.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
That's Kate Reed abstaining, and the motion carries.
I move that the select board approves $40,000 in ARPA funds to be used to modernize the existing walk-in refrigerator and freezer units in the CPS kitchen.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
That's Kate Reed abstaining. The motion carries.
And finally, I move that the select board approves $40,000 in ARPA funds to be used to purchase a sander for the new DPW dump truck pending approval of the dump truck purchase at town meeting, and to be used for the purchase of the new dump truck plow if the cost exceeds the amount approved at town meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
So if the dump truck fails, you just don't spend it. You don't buy the sander.
Don't have a truck to put it on.
Okay. Any other?
Nor wind does the throat.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
That's Kate Reed abstaining, and the motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And thanks to the ARPA committee.
What are you gonna do with all your time once the ARPA money's all spent?
No comment.
He's got a ways to go.
Scott, do you want to just briefly, the PFAS treatment system in the library was included in the packet? Do you want to just mention why it was?
Oh, yeah. So the, one additional request that had come in that we reviewed or we discussed in our meeting yesterday was an additional $18,000 and change for installation of the Gleason PFAS mitigation system. And Martha was on at the meeting with us or zoomed in. In that discussion, essentially, what she had mentioned is they may have some excess in their maintenance line item budget that may be used to cover part or all of that expense. And so I think the work had already begun. So the feedback from the committee was to use any existing resource you have to move that work forward, and if there's a shortfall, to come back to the committee, probably at a lesser amount, to cover the final expenses. And that could be done in a timely manner. Or there's also potentially M F C funds to do that work. So at that time, we didn't feel it necessary to, you know, recommend that amount. And it's not prohibiting the work moving forward.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Scott. Okay. So now we get to the town meeting update.
And I don't have it in my bag.
So I actually have the workbook, you know, because they were, some were printed, and I picked one up from upstairs. But yeah, so we, one thing we need to do as we go through it tonight is the articles that aren't assigned, where we don't have a presenter, that are appropriate for the select board to present. We should decide who's going to do those. And, but before we do that, let me just give you an update on the Community Preservation Committee. Drew is not coming tonight, and I'll explain why. So, as you know, we have two CPA projects in the warrant, one of which is the Cranberry Bog Dam, and the other is the renovation to the Gleason Library. And the, you know, as you recall, a couple of weeks ago, when we were talking about these, the CPC had at that time said that they were recommending the funding for both of those. We're going to come out of undesigned funds. And so we changed the language in the warrant to make it an either/or. And in the course of the last couple of weeks, as the CPC has been working on both grant applications, it became clear that the Historic Commission and the library leadership have not had enough time to discuss these two projects, this project, and have an agreement about how they want to go forward in terms of the funding for it. And it's very important at the state level that because this is being, this is a historic building, and the sort of rehabilitation inside would need the Historic Commission to sort of have a, you know, a high-level oversight role. It was very important to the, to the grant application that the Historic Commission was in support of it. And they did not want to support the project if it was going to deplete the historic fund bucket, which it would, given the size of the project. So we, I had some back and forth with the Historic Commission. Drew McMorro is the chair of the CPC, has been in discussion with some of the, with the library trustees. And the CPC met last night, and we concluded that we did not want to move the, this motion to in the warrant for the library project, that we wanted to allow more time for the Historic Commission and the library leadership to get together and agree on, not just the overall general idea of the project, but some of the specifics, and also see if we can, and the Historic Commission has some potential projects that they are thinking of bringing forward. So we would like to see both of those things happen, the CPC, over the summer, and then consider this application and any other application from the Historic Commission at a fall town meeting. So that was the decision. So what we did last night was we didn't formally vote yet to remove it from the warrant, but we made that statement publicly in our meeting, and we are meeting again on May 1st to take a final vote. We just wanted to allow the opportunity for the library folks and also the Historic Commission, if there's a, if they want to try to, you know, work things out or want to come speak with us, they would have the opportunity to do that. So that's where that stands right now. So our, the select board does not need to make a decision about the, or review this project in terms of which fund it'll come out of, based on the CPC's.
I think we do need to discuss it. I disagree with you on that. Because we voted in support of that amendment, and we also voted, or, you know, said that we were not in favor of it coming out of historic, sorry, out of undesigned, because that would then defeat the undesigned thing if some big project were to come into town, and that ties our hands. I think what we have unwittingly done is put the library, you know, the monkey in the middle, which is not their fault, and I don't think we should let them hang out to dry. I think we have to make, have those discussions ASAP.
Well, Kate, it's not simply about where the funds come from. The difficulty right now is that there are two organizations that need, that both have an interest, have different interests. And so the Historic Commission has said very clearly, they have voted, they voted last week, not to support this project.
Because of the funding.
Yeah, if the funds come out of the historic bucket. And so.
But that's not what they're asked to do. They're asked to support the project or not support the project on the merits of the project, not on where it's getting funded.
Can we always replenish anybody from undesigned?
Yes.
Yes.
What are they worried about?
Well, their concern is that the historic, again, I'm just, you know, again, remember, I'm speaking as someone who has heard from some members of the Historic Commission, the two chairs, but I was not at their meeting. Their concern is that this would, because it's a $400,000 request, it would deplete the historic fund bucket at the moment. And the concern is that there might be some project coming up that's much larger, that would then be taking funds out of the undesigned bucket, and there would be, and the only protected funds for the Historic Commission are the ones that are in the historic bucket. So they want to preserve those funds. And I think the other piece of this is that So they want to preserve those funds and, and I think the other piece of this is that the Gleason Library project got pretty far along before they began discussing it with the Historic Commission. And I think that's another piece of the difficulty.
So basically, they're going to just delay it and get, they're going to kind of recalibrate. That's fine.
I mean, and I know it's difficult for the library. I, I mean, I recognize that they want, they have a fundraising campaign they're trying to launch and it's helpful to have the, you know, a commitment of funds from CPA, but at the same time, Kate, I don't, I don't know that.
Well, I think we're the ones that caused this problem.
I don't agree with that. I mean, I think, I think a lot of it was the last minute nature of it, right? When they came to present to us, you know, it said Historical Commission on what we got in the, in the packet, but what was presented just said library. I, I think that there was just, whoops. I think it was just a lot of miscommunication and it, and it kind of came out of the blue kind of pretty quickly for some people. And so I, I think it makes sense, you know, I mean, the other thing was, as we were talking about that, that night, you know, it's, you know, it's, it seemed likely that these funds weren't even going to be able to be expended within the three year period of time. And so we were talking about that night about extending it. And so this lets them get the fundraising going. It lets them kind of do more, more, you know, education about it and everything. And, you know, and also I think the other thing I would say, and I know that I bring this up a lot, but I have no feel really at all for how the town, you know, I mean, sometimes you just never know what's going to be a hot button. $400,000 for the library maybe, it may be good for them to do a little bit more selling because if it fails, it's done. And so I think this just, it makes it feel a little bit less last minute and more, I'm not saying that they didn't think it through, but if it's all of a sudden there, I think, I think it, I think we risk the project. I am supportive of the project, but I think we also need to support all of our committees, including the library and Hiscom. And, and I think this is just a, a communication thing that we need to solve and also make sure that townspeople really know what we're doing and get people really on board with that. And I think that's better than, you know, jumping in now and having to extend it, you know, because it's not ready and, you know, they can start putting out feelers, how much money are they going to be able to get? So I think that there's lots of good reasons for doing this. Unfortunately, we have to, but it's so critically important that as the sponsor, you know, it, it can't move forward unless the Historical Commission is, is the sponsor on it. And it's not just really where the funding came from, I think that was their entire concern, but I think that was a big part of it. So.
Want to comment?
Well, I just, yeah, I mean, I guess it's also part of the process, you know? The fact is that you can't even start with the CPC until when? You, you didn't, CPC didn't even start.
Fastfall.
Yeah, you know, and they, I believe they did start right away, right, with the CPC?
The library?
That's only a fraction, that's only a fraction of their funding source, right? So I, I would imagine they've been working on this for a lot longer than just CPC.
They have, so it's not like, what I'm saying, the library project is not a last minute deal. It's been kind of in the works and being talked, has been talked about for a while. So I guess, I just feel like, you know, we voted in support of it and then, and then we're the ones that brought up this whole idea of changing the bucket and everything. So, and I had understood that it was on the warrant because CPC had also voted to put it on the warrant. We didn't just put it on the warrant for, you know, and the library didn't put it on the warrant. CPC put it on the warrant and I assume you voted it to put it on the warrant.
Yeah, the CPC is very supportive of this project, but the, because this has come up in the last month about the, the critical nature of having the Historic Commission be, Nathan describes them as a sponsor, whatever you want to say, that they need to be a part, you know, a supporting actor in this application. And, you know, at the moment, they're not. And so.
I guess I still kind of question the reasons why they're not because it seems like it's strictly because it has to do with where the money is coming from and not on the merits of the program.
But it's not, I kind of agree with Nathan. I agree with Nathan, I think it's indicative of they're not actually following a more deliberative and inclusive process, number one. And number two, I don't quite agree with your assessment. If everybody keeps their little pool of money, everybody's got like husbanding money for some pet project. I mean, this is a big project and if we are really going to do this, some other things we won't be able to do. Money's not endless. And, you know, this is a little off topic, but I kind of got my tail handed to me by the Council on Aging today because they're kind of pissed that all these projects are going on and they keep asking for community center and where, where's that? You know, so I don't quite agree that we, just because the Historical Commission feels they want to keep their little pot of money, that we should just say, okay. I think we really have to get more in line in our whole capital plan, whether it's CPA money or our money or ARPA money or whose money, it's money. So I kind of, I kind of agree with Nathan on that.
Travis, do you have a thoughts on this?
I, I tend to agree with David and Nathan on this. I, I know, I mean, the, the library project is exciting, but I think there are a lot of competing interests and I think that at this point, it didn't seem when they presented to us, they talked about the additional funding that they were going to go out into the community and, and we just haven't seen that outreach yet. So it's hard to gauge where we are in the whole scope of the project and I think it would be premature to really, you know, put that. I think it's strategically, politically smart to like, let's have them regroup and get this really solidified is kind of my opinion on that.
I mean, it may be, then we'll, we'll end up as the select but coming back around and deciding we, that it is appropriate to use undesigned funds, right? Depending on how this all plays out. I don't mean now.
It doesn't sound, yeah, yeah.
I mean for the fall. Yeah, yeah. So.
One of the things that I heard and, and, you know, I don't, I don't want to make it seem like Historical Commission is the blocker here. I think it's, it's a communication thing that to me is, is what's needed, not what the Historical Commission does or doesn't do. But one of the things that I did learn very recently is that, you know, there, you know, there was, there was question about, well, is this historic, right? It's in a historic building, but is it historic? And I think that the feedback that we've gotten is, well, if the Historical Commission says okay, then it's, it's going to be, it's going to be okay. So I think it's just more, more just showing how it's just so critical that they're supporting it.
Right.
If we, if it's pushed to fall, is that a problem because we've said not, fall is for non-financial things or it doesn't really matter?
No, because it doesn't affect the town.
It's coming out of CPC, it's not the budget necessarily.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So do you need a motion?
No, this is more an update because it's really the CPC's call about whether or not it gets.
They're going to move it or not.
Right, right. And so we'll finalize that and I expect that we will go, decide not to move it on the, at our, at our next meeting, our last meeting on May 1st.
So I guess another question though, and this is something that we, we have to talk about, when we're talking about committees and things like that, is how do we integrate all these priorities?
Mm-hmm.
So that we don't have this disjointedness because I find that this situation tonight is very awkward.
Yes.
And unpleasant and I, and should, and possibly could have been avoided had there been.
Well, I, yeah, I think what you're raising is really important and I would say two, I think, pretty significant things that we should think about in our summer strategic planning sessions. One is, it's happening already, Aubrey and company are preparing to teach boards. One of the things I got to teach them, and this is not the first time with Drew, and I love Drew, but you got to do your homework ahead of time. Figure out all the groups that are affected, reach them and communicate. We're not that big of a town and we have to do the same, right? I mean, everybody that's affected should be consulted.
How is that true?
What?
You, you said Drew is.
For the, for a CPA project.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It should have been a CPSC committee.
It doesn't matter. I think it's the applicant who would need to do that, not the CPC.
No, right, but it just sort of, we could have been advising them.
Fair statement, I don't know.
Reminding them that that would, should be done as part of this process.
You're right, the boards and committees who are involved, but the lead board and committee or I don't know if it was, did library lead this or did CPC lead this?
No, library.
Okay, then library. Okay, so also the departments, but outreach is important. So I think that's kind of more in the training side. But the bigger picture, and this again does relate to my meeting this morning with Council on Aging and Human Services. You know, Ryan, you've mentioned that you want to get more control on capital plan. And I think having all, my response to them, again, it's a little bit off topic, but my response to the council this morning is, you know, our prevailing sentiment was we clearly identified the need for the public safety buildings and we need to get those statement of work, which is next meeting, go out to bid, I mean, get town approval, or I guess, I don't know which is which, but get bids, town approval, know that dollar amount. Once we know that and looking at, forward at future capital expenditures, which we have sort of a list, I think we need to include this other stuff and really prioritize, you know, what are the projects? What are the big projects and where are they going to be, how are they going to be paid for? I think that's, we've done a good job at our operating budget this year, but I think our capital budget lags and that's, to me, a part of it.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with you about the prioritization, David. And I think, you know, I, I don't know how it gets solved, but $400,000 is a lot of money that could go towards another one. It, it seems like it's a lot of whoever gets their act together first is the most likely one to get the, the funding. It's not necessarily the most pressing needs. I'm not saying that this isn't a pressing need, I'm just saying in, in general. And so I think, you know, I think as we particularly as, you know, liaisons to these different boards, if we're hearing things like this, we should be, you know, if, if it's a big, big expense, we should be throwing up alarm bells and saying, okay, let's figure out where does this fit within the town priorities for expenditures because this is a huge amount.
Yeah, yeah. So moving on from that, we also have the Martin Road, you know, being designated a scenic road at town meeting and so we have a planning board memo that indicates their support for that. So that was one of the other outstanding items that we did not take a position on. So we could do that tonight.
That was very helpful to get that letter from Julie.
Yeah, and unless people have questions about it, yeah, Julie had worked with the planning board to get that explanation and their indication of strong support. So that is in the warrant, it's, which item is that one? Trying to remember.
I believe it's 19.
Which one?
19.
19. Yeah, you know them by heart, right, Ryan?
I, I move that the select board support article 19 to amend the general bylaws to include Martin Street as a scenic road.
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the select board supports this article. So those were the two outstanding items. Am I right, Ryan, in terms of the select board positions?
Yes.
Yeah, so then we have a number of articles that I just went through as I was looking through this. You know, the first whole section is the consent agenda and, and that's typically done by the, is that done by somebody from the select board?
Yeah, it's done by, typically by the chair.
Yeah, okay, so I, that's what I thought.
Madam Chair, the moderator's also on Zoom.
Oh, good. Hi, Wayne, welcome.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Great. So we're just going through the warrant book and assigning presenters and I'm glad you're joining us because you can help remind us who typically does what. All right, so I will do the consent agenda as the chair and that will cover through article eight. And then article nine, so this is the salary and wage table and Wayne, typically, doesn't a town board, a, a town resident, a town member present the articles rather than a staff person, a town hall staff person?
Why?
Well, my question is, because before we, well, exactly, but before, could we have, could Ryan present this one or do you, or generally do we not have that?
You'd have fire chief and police chief presenting?
It's.
Yeah, Wayne.
So for the most part, it has been the case that it's a, the board, you know, a member of the, whatever board or, or committee. However, there's no, certainly no, that's been the Carlisle practice. That said, there have been times when the town employee has presented things and certainly in other towns, especially where you have something that may be fairly technical, would be not at all surprising to have the town manager or administrator, school board superintendent, the treasurer or whomever, if that's the best person, there's no reason not to do it that way.
Okay, so why don't we have, Ryan, if you're comfortable with that, put your, you'll be presenting article nine?
All right.
Work for you?
What, do I have eight minutes?
You might get a little more.
All right, seven and a half.
And you get a, you, we'll have to be sure and review your presentation with the town moderator.
Will do.
At a time. Okay. And then we have article 10, the pri.
Can I remind you?
Yeah.
I just need to remind you that the, the motion does need to be made by one of you.
Okay, good, thank you.
The petition will be made by Ryan.
Okay, that's an important, all right, so who would like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, so Nathan will move it. All right. Great. And then the, so article 10 is the prior year bills and I guess, Ryan, that probably would make sense for you to do that one as well and.
I'm going to get booed on that one.
Yeah, who wants to move that one?
You weren't here.
I'll move that one too.
Okay, thanks, Nathan. All right, and Ryan presents.
Have you voted that?
We've, yeah, we voted on all of these except for the two we just discussed.
There's a new bill, right? There's another bill?
Yeah.
They don't have to get.
That's a little one will get, is going to be added, yeah. Article 11 is the operating budget, so FinCom's going to do this. Then article 12 is the.
But who moved, do they, do they move it?
They move it also, yeah.
Yeah. So then article 12 is the capital equipment and is that also FinCom typically? Okay, so let's make sure they know that.
And I owe you, I owe you some, something on that, I know.
Okay. And then article 13, the school would do, I'm assuming the school committee or Cory Auditorium lighting project.
Does, does school committee know they're presenting that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's Jeremy, right, that they said?
I think Jeremy said that.
Yeah.
Are they, are they going to be making the motion or are we going to be making the motion? I mean, because we could easily make the motion and it would go faster, right?
Probably better and then they can signify their support, right?
Yeah, I don't know. What do you think, Wayne?
It does say Carlisle School Committee on the final warrant.
Yeah, right.
Cory Auditorium lighting project.
Yeah, I think the school committee should do it.
So we have CPS move it and then Jeremy could go through the presentation, right?
Mine.
Okay.
It's posted online.
Well, he could move it.
And article 14 is the Greeno Barn removal. I am happy to make this motion. Ryan, would you prefer, we, so CONSCOM is not, I know Sylvia's been involved in this up to now, but is this, does this make sense for?
Is there going to be a presentation or is it just, a lot of these, we just read, right, what's in here, right? And answer questions as they make.
right, what's in here, right, and answer questions as they make come up?
I think that one might need a presentation with the visuals.
I think we might need, yeah, a presentation on, because it's.
So who on the select board has been involved in that?
Yeah, well, I mean, I have a little, David and I have a little bit, just because of our planning meetings with Ryan.
To present, Ryan would be the best. I mean, he knows the most.
He does, he does.
He does, I agree.
We don't have to go.
Yes, we do, because we have to read the motions, and then Ryan will do the presentations.
You all right with that?
And it's a, it's a good way for the town to, to get to know Ryan as well, so.
Okay, so who wants to move that one?
I thought you said, well, you said move it, you said you would move it, and then Ryan will present it.
Okay. That's good, and then.
I do, excuse me, I do think you ought to check with CONSCOM, my conversations with Sylvia, and, and CONSCOM thinks it's responsible for the presentation.
On the Greeno Barn? Okay.
On the Greeno Barn, they're, they're the ones who brought it forward.
Yeah. I know that Alex Para is not going to be at town meeting. He's out of town.
They were, yeah, they were, they were concerned, they weren't quite sure who, who would be best positioned to do it, so they may welcome having Ryan do it. All I'm just saying is, you need to coordinate with them.
Okay.
All of these things, as the way I run town meeting, if it's not absolutely required to be done by a certain way, by state law, or, or by laws, or, or something, if it, just because we've done it one way in the past, it's not set in concrete if there's a reason to do it differently. Do you flex in the, the solace we should be?
Okay.
I can talk with Sylvia tomorrow.
Okay, and clarify. I think if CONSCOM wants to do it, it should be a member of CONSCOM, yeah. Okay, and then we have Article 15, the CPA appropriation, which would be the CPC committee, and Drew would do that, both the motion and the explanation, same thing with the.
So he's doing everything but the.
Everything, right, everything but motion two.
Didn't we have some other bucket kind of discussions?
There's the, there's the disbursement of.
Yeah, the, this motion one is, is how all the funds get divvied up, that's standard. But then we have this, the last one is about the Cranberry Bog Dam, which.
Wasn't that the same issue?
Yes, it was, actually.
So what's up with that?
It's, it's going to come out of open space. I mean, based on.
Okay, so, so they, so not tapping undesignated?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Correct.
So should we vote on motion three? Because we did not vote on motion two or three last time. We only voted on the first motion of moving the money around.
Thank you, Nathan, you're right, you're right. So motion three, then, which is about the Cranberry Bog Dam, just to make sure everybody heard it, is that, so it would be, the handbook would say it's going to come out of open space, the Open Space Reserve Fund?
I'm sorry, no, the handbook is the.
No, this is the, this is the warrant book.
Okay.
The hand, the motion's handout.
Handout.
Will say, because this says either or, but we have to specify which it's coming from for the town meeting.
For the vote on, when we're voting on the articles, is voting on the articles, is not voting on the motion, because we're not seeing the motion.
Wayne's shaking his head, no.
No?
No.
You got it exactly backwards.
Well, right, I, I do, okay.
It's a motion that matters.
Well, I mean, at the town, at town meeting, you're voting on, on the, on the motion.
Yeah, but right now, we're voting whether or not to support the articles in the warrant book.
Okay. So.
I think it still applies, though, because it's and/or.
Yeah, so, I mean.
So I, I move that the select board support motion three of the warrant handbook.
Of Article 16.
Of Articles.
It's 15 or 16?
Of Article 16, which is for, just for clarity, it is for the Cranberry Bog Dam, number one.
Second, thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, then we are on to Article 17, which is the COA Property Tax Exemption Program, and so they are going to both move that and present on that. It's, it's, this is a lengthy, as you'll, as you can see in the warrant book, it's almost a full pa, it's a full page and some, so I'm assuming they're doing a presentation.
At the last meeting, Carol agreed to give this presentation on behalf of the COA.
Okay. So somebody from the COA, I guess, should move it, and then Carol could make the presentation. Does that sound right? Yeah, yeah.
Lots of times in town meetings, it has been the select board that's been making the motion, and then somebody just comes up to present it. It's just a little bit more, rather waiting for somebody to get up and make a motion.
Yeah.
I'm not sure this one has to be done by COA. It could be anybody making the motion, and then somebody, somebody jumps in.
Yes, on to COA.
David, you want to make this motion, then, for the COA?
Sure.
You don't have to make the presentation. You're just moving it, and then Carol Grunike will do the presentation. All right. Okay, and I'm assuming you're taking notes here, Ryan, so with it, I've got notes here, but, and I know Kate does, but if you, all right, and then we have, then we have Article 18, which is the town offices Saturday hours. So is this, so would the select, we could move this again, and then have Peggy comment on it, make a brief presentation?
I'm fine moving, if you need somebody.
Okay. So Nathan will move it, and Peggy will present it. All right. And then Article 19, yeah, I assume the planning board will do this.
I can move it.
Okay. And the last one is, ah, the Personnel Bylaw Amendment.
I'll move that.
Do you want to move that one, Kate? And then, does Aubrey want to make this presentation? She planning to come?
Yes.
Okay. Does that make sense? I think it does.
Yeah.
Okay, so Kate would move that, and Aubrey will present it. All right, that's, I want to just go back and look at those early ones, because Nathan, I think you're making a good point of the select board. Was there one where we could move it rather than, where did we say that? Oh, it was the FinCom. They're going to move their own motions, but they're the only ones, right? All these others, we are.
And the school is going to move that.
And the school will move theirs. Okay, okay.
I think it'd be odd for a select board to move a school one.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good to me. Everybody comfortable with that, Travis? You don't have a.
I don't have a roll in it, but that's okay.
I know, do you want to, I'm happy to give you.
Take one of Nathan's, yeah.
Yeah.
Fine, fine.
Take one of Nathan's and give it to him.
So Barney, are you moving the consent agenda? You're not doing?
Yes, I am. Yes.
And then the CPC is moving, or the select board's moving 15 and 16?
15.
You know, Luke used to always move them, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, we had Drew down as moving them, but.
Number 10?
No, 15 and 16.
Prior bills.
Oh, prior bills, yeah.
So that's going to be Travis now?
All right, I'll, I'll volunteer. I'll take the wrath of.
All right.
The one that Travis did.
The two, the two newbies.
If it doesn't pay, pass, you have to pay the bills.
Right, okay.
So I have Barney moving the consent agenda, Nathan moving Article 9, Travis, Article 10, 11 and 12 is FinCom, 13 is school committee, 14 is Barney, 15 is CPC, or do you want to assign that to select board, 15 and 16?
I think Drew can move the motions for that.
And just stay there.
Or do you want to have select board think?
I think we just have a select board person do it.
Okay. Sure, speed it up a little. Who wants to do?
I'll do 15.
Okay, Kate, and then there's also 16.
What is 16?
It's the Greeno.
This is the, no, 16 is the buckets.
All right, so that's Barney. I volunteer her.
I thought 15 was the bucket.
No, 15 is the extra $4,000 to cover the administrative cost for the rest of this year.
I'll do both of those, how about that?
Okay, so you'll do 15 and 16, and then.
David, 17, Nathan, 18, 19, Nathan, 20, Kate.
Okay, 15 and 16, all right, yeah, David's 17. Nathan's doing 18, Nathan's doing 19, Kate's doing 20. Okay, sounds good. Great.
Just, just one, one note for Kate. Article 16 will be done with three.
It's three motions, yeah. Oh, you know what, Travis, you want to do 15? Give you another one.
Which is the first of the CPA motions. It's the one about an extra $4,000.
The extra what?
To cover administrative costs. So then Kate, but we'll, assuming what hap, what I think is going to happen, happens at the CPC meeting, you wouldn't, we wouldn't have, we just, two motions instead of three.
I get it.
I don't know if you heard that part, Wayne, before you got on the call, but, yeah, we're not going to be, I think we will not be moving the motion number two under the Article 16. I can explain more offline if you want to know more. Okay, all right. Anything else while we have you, Wayne, about town meeting that you want to share with us? Because we won't meet again till after town meeting.
No, I don't, I don't think so. Just, you know, for the, for the public, we will have electronic voting the first time. We will have a little bit of a trial and practice session, and then, whether any votes are controversial or not, we'll still do a couple to at least test out the system, and maybe we'll have something controversial and see the real beauty of that.
Okay. I have a question for you. So the recognition of in-town employees, when, where does that fall in this sequence?
That comes up front.
Yes, so refresh my memory, since I'll be doing that. So that's, you open the meeting, and then what happens next? You review everything.
When I go through the various procedural things, then, and then I, and then I recognize the chair of the select board to thank.
Okay. Yep.
Volunteers, and then we get the Patriots, Patriot Act report.
Oh, yeah. Okay, right. Okay, and then after that, we go into the first items. Okay, got it.
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't thought about the precise sequence. What we, we may do is probably after all that, then I'll do the, do a little bit of a demonstration.
Right. Okay, great. Okay.
Chair, can I just?
Yes, please.
And I see David read my mind. So I just want to show the town website. Here, so right on the landing page is this block, it says town meeting. This link here takes you to.
I missed that, too.
I just yelled at him because I couldn't find it.
I was planning on doing this, anyway, but the, so this is the link from the QR code, and we'll also put a red banner a week out on the town website to show people that they can land here. And you'll see here the documents. We have the booklet, a searchable PDF, the signed one, and then the searchable. And then the town report is here as well, and all the presentations you've seen for articles, we're placing here, and then meeting information is here. One thing that we are adding to the documents section, per the moderator and FinCom's request, is a budget summary. So that is a much cleaner version of the documents we went through, and a version of what I planned to put together for you next year. I can show that real quick. So this is just a high-level summary. You'll recognize a lot of these sections. Budget highlights, the process, revenue, expenses, tax impact, the capital budget, including a link, the warrant articles, the reserves, and then the final steps. The mo, the motion booklet will also include a free cash breakdown, so that people can see that for the budget vote. And then attached to this budget document is a line item budget, 74 pages from UNIS, very clear for folks to understand the, the exact expenses from each category. So should be a transparent budget process.
So the, but in the calendar, the town meeting's not listed as an event. When you go to the calendar section of the, unless I misdid it, go back to where you were. That's possible.
I had a question, though. Do you, do we know if the school, school used to send out their budget in a, you know, blurb every year to every household? Are they going to have some sort of a budget document that we could add to this? Because this is good information, and it would certainly save on postage for the school, but.
Yes.
Seems to me that that should go in there, too.
We will add a calendar item.
It's not in the calendar?
Not yet.
Not yet. It's not even May yet.
And while we're on that topic, though.
Kind of known for a while.
We will put something, I think we generally put something up at the Rotary, you know, an easel at the Rotary, so it's a Monday night, probably want to put that up on Friday, yeah, so people see it over the weekend. Okay, anything else on town meeting? All right, excellent. Let's move ahead, then. We have the contract approval. We're looking at the police chief employment agreement, which is in our packets. I think that's on page 57, I believe. Yeah, start, it's the packet I'm looking at.
59 is a new one. This is the fire chief agreement.
Which, let's see, Travis, you and Ryan were the negotiators on this one, and we talked about this, I think, in executive session, but you want to give any kind of an overview, either one of you?
So the highlights, highlights from our negotiation with the team, Nathan was there as well, and Aubrey, is to increase the fire chief's salary, commiserate with other town employees this year by 3%, and include a $3,000 stipend for him serving as the emergency management coordinator. But rather than serving as a stipend, we're rolling it into his annual salary. Well, another thing, if the chief serves as a working chief, which he's always done, and meets certain eligibility, per the on-call standards, he would qualify for the working stipends that our on-call employees get. This was limited by the board to make sure that the fire chief manages first, and then responds to calls second. Also tied his increases, his annual increases to the townwide COLA, and a meets expectation rating for an annual evaluation that he will get if the board votes that he meets expectations, and if the board doesn't do an evaluation, he will automatically get, which was important to the, the select board's process. All other, there also was a, by select board request, a inclusion of the items that would be a part of the fire chief's evaluation. And then we cleaned up just some language to make it match other town employee contracts. And then we cleaned up just some language to make it match other town employee contracts. And vetted it with counsel. So this contract is ready to sign. And I would be very pleased to have Chief Soros serve with me as a fire chief for the next three years. I think he's done an excellent job. He's responsive, works well with me and other town departments, and it's been a pleasure to serve with him.
So I, I move to approve and execute the employment contract between the town of Carlisle and Brian Soros for the position of fire chief commencing on July first, 2023, and expire as of the end of day on June thirtieth, 2026. Said agreement may be extended for an additional three-year term to expire on June thirtieth, 2029.
Second that.
Thank you, Travis. Any more discussion?
Good job, you guys.
Yes, thank you very much to the negotiating group.
And I agree.
To the fire chief.
Yes.
Well, chief has done a great job the past three years and very active in L E P C and bringing lots of good ideas and money, grants, and I think it's a good job.
Yeah, and managing the staffing and, you know, challenging, in a challenging situation. And doing a lot in the community generally. Yeah, so we're very happy to renew this contract. All right, well, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously.
Can I just mention that the review, it was, you know, an important part of this, and so just to the board, we got to make sure we plan these reviews, so just think about that as a scheduling.
Yeah, so if this is a three-year, this is, there's an annual review, though, correct? So when would we imagine that happening if this contract runs, you know, June starts in, July one and ends next June? Would we want to do that like in the early spring?
Was there a goal setting? I mean, now, the first is like now, right? I think if we're go, I believe, what are you on a, what calendar are you on?
I'm on a contractual calendar.
No, I know, but what is that date? What is that?
August twentieth.
And then, so the police, the big positions in town, the, Brian's on a June thirty, July one, is that what this is?
July one.
And the.
New chief.
New Chief Amendola will be.
May.
May, but close enough and all. I mean, it's close enough, right? I, I think we should, we should be, again, setting our goals in the summer, and then the big three, or, you know, maybe it's more people, but, you know, those goals need to flow down, and we should set up goal setting and reviews. And it should be roughly, you know, in sync with that, right? I mean, we should set the goals in the summer, and we should sit with them probably to talk about their goals, and then we should have a review session, you know, some number of months later, right?
Yeah. So the goal setting would likely, we do that first, and then we would have individual discussions with each of them, right? To do, to review their goals.
There's a little bit of onboarding with Chief Amendola that's maybe more frequent, but basically, you know, Brian and Ryan don't need like preamble. We just, these are our goals, and these.
And they're pretending they're.
How your goals relate to that, and then, you know, so that's the fall, or I don't know, but it's like late summer.
Early fall, yeah.
So, you know, six months later, like springtime, we should review, like a check-in, right?
One of the things I think, if I can suggest this, would be helpful is we've really entrusted Ryan, we've given him more responsibility. He could kind of spearhead that process and, and, you know, bring it to us. I think would be helpful rather than, you know, us totally, I mean, we can certainly evaluate the goals and such, but I think I'd.
Agree.
Personally, like to, like, move a little bit more of that on him, on his shoulders, to then come to us and have us review those goals. And then we can meet with the individual employees.
Well, there's, so there's three different cases, right? So Ryan is clearly our employee, so we would do his goal setting. Chief Amendola is the town administrator, or it's our, is our employee.
Our employee.
And.
Supervised by the.
Supervised, so there's an input, but it's very important, I think, in Chief Soros's case, where you have a strong chief, that the linkage be from select board to employee. So I guess I disagree with you. I mean, I think there's input, obviously, but I, I think it's an employer-employee relationship that is pretty important.
It's fair. It's just a discussion of where as a board we want to go with the town, and if we're moving more towards a professional management, or if we want to do it. And I'm not, I know it takes away, I don't know, some of our power and authority, but, I mean, not ultimately. We can, we decide ultimately what happens with each of these. And I'm not saying we don't interview each, but I'm just getting, saying some of the legwork and management of that, I think, in my opinion, we should be turning more to the, to the town minister.
My suggestion is, that's a good topic for some, I don't think at nine fifteen.
Fair enough.
Ad hoc, we should make a decision. I think it's a good thing you're bringing up that we should think about.
Noted that that's something we want to include in our conversations earlier in the summer. Okay. We've agreed on the fire chief employment agreement, so let us do the financial policies, which I know we're.
Don't forget, we have the Center Park sign was skipped over.
No, you, well, I said at the beginning that we are, we have, we took this off the agenda for a variety of reasons, and that's going to come back to us after it gets, works through with the historic commission.
Are we going to skip over the police chief?
Yeah, because it's not, it's not ready, quite ready yet.
It's around the weekend, right?
All right, so we're two, down to the financial policies, so let's take a look at that. That, in the old packet, it's on page sixty-nine. There are two motions. We could just take them one at a time, and there are some places, I think, where we need to make some decisions. Is that right, Ryan, about the numbers? Yeah.
Those are the areas that were discussion points for the Fin, Fin team and FinCom.
Yeah.
That the board should understand while, before they vote.
Right, so.
So do we want to understand that before we make the motion, or do we get that as part of the discussion?
Yes.
We can do it as part of the discussion.
So I move that the select board vote to adopt the financial reserve policy is presented on April twenty-fifth, 2023.
So let's take a look at that. Ryan, do you want to, I know you've gone through this a little bit before with us, but you want to walk us through what the points that we need to.
So the, the point of the financial policy, so one of the things you'll see when we finally get the audit in front of you is that financial policies and publishing financial policies is the one negative that we have on our management letter. So a pretty good management letter to only have that, but we do need to focus on passing these, which is why I've been pushing them. The, also saw in this budget process the importance of understanding the financial reserves placement in the budget process and understanding. So when there was a lot, there was conversations about where does the ten percent number come from, or where does the twelve percent for financial reserves come from? It does come from D O R recommendation, but should be in, in your policy to serve as a best practice. So the Fin team and the FinCom talked about this financial reserve policy in that context. So overall, this first highlight, it says that the town strives to have ten to twelve percent in reserve at any time, and the range is intentional by the finance committee, saying that we shouldn't commit to a ten or a twelve number, but a range in order to have some flexibility. Just flowing down, and then I think you should, should talk about it, the free cash part of it. So practice demonstrates that you keep more free cash than sustainability, sustainability, wow.
Reserve.
Then stabilization in order to have more flexibility with your reserve account, which is, which is a town choice. So the free cash range, you would strive to keep five to seven percent in reserve. And then any excess above seven percent would go to fund capital needs, one-time expenditures, or unfunded liabilities like OPEB.
And again, this is, these numbers that we're seeing in yellow are the recommendation of the FinCom and the finance team?
Finance team.
Okay.
So then stabilization funds, the balance would be three to five percent with appropriation above three percent, assuming that the three and the five, and the five and the seven equal ten to twelve. That's how the.
They don't quite, so. I mean, that's, that's really my only criticism or comment is five to seven and three to five is a range of eight to twelve, right? So it's, it's like, there's like a third condition that's not being spoken, right? Because if you go to the min of both of those two, you violate the min total, right?
Yes.
Am I overthinking it? I mean, it kind of instructs you that, I'm going to go back to it, but it instructs that.
I think you want to go up.
Uh, no, I think I'm, I think I'm in the wrong, oh.
Well, you're on the.
Oh, he's at the site here.
Yeah.
So three to five, we'll go back to cash.
So Mike, just to answer your specific question there, in my opinion, stabilization should be more firm. So if you wanted to do five percent stabilization.
Well, I want to clear that the min, the two mins get to ten. I'm okay with the five to seven because that maxes at twelve.
You'd want more flexibility in your free cash than your stabilization. So if you wanted it to be exact, you would do five stabilization, five to seven in free cash.
Five, yeah, I'm okay with that. That would be okay with me. It's more prescriptive.
I have a question about the appropriating anything above seven percent. Could you explain that a little bit more?
This came up a lot in the finance committee discussions. So the idea that having more than twelve percent in reserve was a overtaxing of residents was one of the, the conversation points. So having a plan for anything that was above the twelve percent was important to the finance committee, or give it back. So this year, you are retaining more than twelve percent, twelve point eight, nine percent. But the concept was there is a capital investment needed next year, and then a spike in the school assessment coming in three years that should be planned for. So it was an intentional high-end, sorry, high-end move of your reserves in order to meet those future challenges. If you didn't have a plan, then you should not reserve that much. So then what you use it on should be prescriptive in your policies. So they identified the areas that you should focus on first.
Okay. I just wouldn't want us to be in this situation where we're, in order to keep it at seven percent or below, we're actually trying to find ways to spend the money.
Yeah, there's.
It'd be better to just keep it and then maybe reduce next year, you know, you know, incorporate it into the budget in the following year so that the taxes are lower.
And we did, you're right, we talked about it a lot. The idea is to have a plan. Otherwise, if you find yourself in a situation, which will never happen, but where you don't have anything to spend it on, then you should adjust your ability to create reserves and tax less.
But isn't this saying that we have to spend it? This is saying it needs to be appropriated.
You're saying that if you find yourself in that situation, you should spend it. That's what the policy is.
To your point of now, should the language be a little more flexible in terms of? You should put the page up so I can see it, but. Allow for the thing that's happening now, which is that we're actually planning to spend it, but in the next fiscal year. So it's not that one, go to the free cash, right there. So any, the way it's written, right? We'll limit this, and we'll appropriate any excess above seven of the annual budget to reserve, blah, blah, blah. Maybe it should be wordsmith to kind of indicate that you have a couple of years to figure that out.
So it did when it said reserves. And one of the things that you haven't funded in recent memory is capital stabilization, which is another way of reserving outside your twelve for future capital.
Does that need to be? That's not clear from this policy either.
That's, that is in the word reserves.
It is? I mean, is that a defined term? I think we should be clear. I mean, you're, you're going to give them eighty-seven pages of UNIS, which is, you know, interesting, I guess, but not particularly useful. Here's where we want clarity.
A comment I got today was the exact opposite.
Really?
That without it, it was worthless.
Without what?
Without the eighty-seven pages, the budget summary was worthless. I'm just showing you that.
Okay, fair enough. But the point is, I think, that, my point, I should say, is where, where clarity really counts is in these policies. And I think if we're going to, if you're going to add a third condition that's reserves, we should explain that.
Maybe I, I haven't been through this process as much, but it seems like it's, it's open enough. It says budget decision-makers will avoid fully depleting the town's free cash in any year. But, you know, that kind of shows that there's some leeway, you know, that they can draw down on it, but they can't deplete it totally.
That part's okay. That's, that's at the low end. What we're talking about is what, what do you do when you get to the high end?
Yeah.
And I, I'm just, I'm not, I think it's a good policy. I don't want to be, sound, I sound overly critical, but the, the point is that when it's over seven and three select boards from now, we need guidance. Like, what's the guidance? And it turns out there's another little condition which says, well, you could reserve it for future use. Like, it's just not written very clearly, that's my.
I, I think this is a, a good point, David, but this goes to what I've been saying throughout this budget process, is you have a good budget. You maintain a good budget, and you, you have, but it's not written down. You don't have a prescribed policy and budget process. So this is the first step at it, which, so it doesn't surprise me that in the three conversations that we've had with this Fin team, FinCom, and select board, that you're trying to wrestle with the idea of, of what do you do? And writing it down helps you keep to that with continuity from board to board to board, rather than this concept of, well, this is how it's done, or.
No, I, I fully support that. Maybe as a suggestion, if it said above seven percent of the annual budget to reserves for future expenditures, comma, and blah, blah, blah. Just that maybe extra phrase would cover the situation we're in now, where we have an extra almost one percent we're planning to use in a future budget year.
Sounds great.
I mean, do you mean, now you've lost me, David, because you mean to, annual budget to reserves such as stabilization funds?
No, no, because I don't, I think stabilization's its own thing. This says your range is five to seven percent of free cash.
Right.
You shouldn't go, it actually doesn't say you can, you, you can't go below five. They just don't want you to go to zero.
Right.
So you can't go to zero. That's a hard floor, obviously. I mean, you can't go below zero, but you shouldn't go to zero. It's not that prescriptive about the minimum.
Any excess.
But above seven, it's pretty prescriptive. Like, you got to get rid of it. And I'm just saying, okay, fine, but one of the get-rid-of-it ways is a reserve for future, for expenditures in future budget years as compared with, you can't just keep it forever, but if you've identified something that might come up in a future budget year, I just thought it should be more clearly identified.
It seems to me reserves has to be in an account.
Well, that was my other point, but then, you know.
That's why I'm.
If, if, well, right, so I think.
There's no such thing as reserves.
I don't know. I'm hearing that there is.
Free cash, no, well, but we do have reserves. We do have, for instance, a stabilization fund, which is a reserve.
All of this is a form of, everything here is a form of reserves.
Capital needs is not, is not a reserve.
I mean, I'm sorry, free cash and stabilization are, are reserves, right?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a third reserve?
Well, that's, I guess that's, is that the question that you're actually at?
I was asking that, but Ryan kind of told me to go away on that, so I was trying something different. I would never.
You know, I have a more basic thing. I'm still getting at the, you know, the, the comment about, you know, we don't want, we don't want it to be over seven percent because we either need to have a plan for it or reduce taxes. I don't see the word plan in here. I, it, it seems to me like what we're doing is we're just, we're, we're saying, okay, it's over seven percent, so put it in a different bucket.
Intentionally put it in a different bucket.
Yes. And actually, maybe.
That, that doesn't drive at all towards reducing expenses. Right? In fact, it's going to, it's going to do the opposite.
Well, I think that most towns, including this one, don't have that problem. So as you've identified tonight, there's four or so building projects that could always use this money to be reserved in capital stabilization. And whether you do it or not is, is a thing. I just don't think that will exist where there isn't something to spend it on. Whether you should or not is different.
So you're appropriating, you can appropriate something to a fund. Yeah, I, I always thought that you were appropriating an expense, but you're, you're saying that this is, it's just going into another fund that has a plan around it?
So this year's budget cycle was a good example. If you didn't use free cash for the operating budget, you would have. If you didn't use free cash for the operating budget, you would have had in excess of about 235,000. So the conversation would have been, do we put that in stabilization? Do we keep it in free cash? Or do we earmark it for a future cause? What you did this year was because the tax burden would be so high, if you did it, you lowered people's taxes with that money. But in a year where you were fine with the taxes at, say, 2.5%, you might have said, okay, we have a building project coming up, let's put it in capital stabilization. Or look at our list of 10 years of projects and say, let's fund one of these upfront. That's what this is saying.
But actually, nowhere in here does it say, or reduce taxes.
Right, it should say that too, yeah, that's right. When do we need, when do you need this, like, approved? Because I think we could retool that paragraph.
Well.
Like, we could put our brains to it and it would be clearer, I think.
Ideally, we would have it before the next audit.
Like the, a year from now audit?
Yes.
So we can take.
There's also.
We can take a couple of weeks.
The DOR would tell you if they were here, I hate to speak for them, but it's, you should put something on the books and then fine tune it at some point.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, this can always be.
James.
But we're.
Right.
I mean, it's close enough that we're not going to kill ourselves if we said, okay, and.
Personally, I'd rather have a chance to write, rewrite that paragraph.
Okay.
Travis?
No, I would agree with David on that. I, I think that, you know, this is important. This is kind of setting how we want to, you know, this is the snapshot of what we think as a town, how we want to manage our money. I think it's important to get that right.
Yeah, it's also important to have a policy, which we have zero of right now.
Give us two weeks. Well, we've, we've had two centuries of no policy.
Yeah, well.
Even if you have a policy, people can change it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that, right, we could always vote to change it.
We probably won't go back on it. I mean, once, once these things get set, they'll be set.
Yeah, it would take something very specific.
I'll write it this week and then we'll put it on the agenda for.
May 9th or possibly June 13th, yeah.
We finished the, most of the deliberation.
And in our summer sessions, we need a plan for policy review. So this is, this is the third time it's come here.
Let's, let's go on then to the, the next one about the overlay or, yeah.
Well, okay, so.
So move down to that one, or are there other things in this one that we should?
So, by the way, we had a, a motion on the table, so it has to be tabled. That motion has to be tabled.
Correct. Would you make that motion, please?
I move we table the last motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? All right, we're tabling the motion. Now we're on to the overlay policy. Well, maybe we should do it the other way around.
Kill it.
Yeah.
I think we had a second on the first.
I think we, I think David seconded it, but do you want to give us a, a quick? Oh, this one doesn't have anything highlighted.
It does, so this one is, this one is fairly statutory. So the, it used to have more of a, a policy, and I'll just give you the quick history. The, the overlay used to be another type of reserve account until the Municipal Modernization Act changed it. So now it doesn't serve as a place where people like me can tuck money during the budget process in order to change the tax rate. It's now prescriptive in, in how we use it. So the Board of Assessors, this, this policy matches what we do now. The Board of Assessors gives a report of what the overlay account is. Kim, Brian, the assessors and I looked at it this year in a year where we expected a lot of abatements and analyzed it for its, for its effectiveness. And it, it is still maintaining its balance for the purpose of abatement and other tax breaks that we give. If there was to be in excess, which is part of, it's one of the lines in the budget that we discussed and we went over, then you could use it for, for other things. But what we're telling you is the Municipal Modernization Act really removed that, that tool. So it could happen, there could be in excess, but it, it wouldn't be a lot and there wouldn't be a, a huge decision point for you. So all of that is to say, the FIN team and the finance committee is saying that this is ready for your approval pending any, any questions. And it matches the overlay surplus in the FIN, financial reserves policy. So section Cs match.
Okay. So I guess you could make the motion.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board moved to adopt the overlay policy as presented on April 25th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the overlay policy?
When, well, not about the policy.
Okay.
Well, I'm just concerned about our warrant article that's going to be put forward by the COA for the.
Tax exemption.
Senior tax exemption and that, that would affect this account, I take it.
The overlay account?
Yeah.
Yes, however, it has to pass, so we're mending state law in order to pass that, if it does pass a town meeting. So that would not take effect until the state met next year, so this wouldn't affect until FY '26.
Okay, so it's not going to affect their calculations.
Uh, FY '25, sorry. Where are we, where am I right now?
About to start '24.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's all, that's.
Okay.
That would come to you as a, you know, the levy sheet where I tried to show you where the taxes would be, that's one of the lines is, is overlay. I still don't think we would need more. I think we're, we've got basically one abatement cycles cushioned in there, which is where you want to be.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one? All right, does all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? All right, this policy is adopted.
One out of two.
Okay.
Too bad. Report we've done.
Then we are really down to, and does anyone have a liaison report to offer?
Ryan and I are, we're, I'm gonna be, we're trying to schedule another meeting with Comcast. We're trying to schedule another meeting with Comcast. That's it, I have.
Is it moving forward or are you just?
It's, it's moving forward.
Okay, that's good.
We think it's moving forward.
Painfully, but yes.
Yeah.
Painfully, okay. All right, let's do the minutes then. Uh, there are two sets of minutes, one for March 22nd and one for March 28th.
Do you want them separately or together?
Does anyone have any changes in the minutes? Because if there aren't any.
I do have a few.
Okay. So let's take them one by one then.
Why doesn't, if you have changes, because I read them, I had no changes, so.
So why don't we start with the?
So on, on 322, I have extremely minor changes. That's page 94 of the packet.
Yeah.
On the town clerk, about one, two, three, four, five, six lines down, where the provisions of the Votes Act of 2022 period. Period needs to go away because it's the middle of the sentence. That's very minor. And then on the personnel bylaw, the next paragraph down, I think the Select Board met with Assistant TA Aubrey Thomas Dash, should be a period. This article proposes, and that's it for that one. We can take that one up.
Okay.
I will then make the motion to approve the March 22, 2023 minutes as amended.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes approved and March 28th.
Yeah, so this one, now I gotta ask for people's recollection because I don't remember anything. So there's town meeting recommendations about the operating budget. It says on the motion made by Kate Reed, seconded by David Modell, was voted three to two, so a split vote, right? But there's nothing about deliberation. Now, was that the meeting? We, we had a lot of chat about the 30K, the 60K. That's why it was three, two, right? So there's nothing on that, and I don't remember if it was this meeting or some other meeting, but I think it's, I just don't know.
There's nothing about the discussion.
And then similarly, because we won't.
Would you advocate putting something in there about discussions?
I think so, if you have a three, two vote, I think so.
I think that'd be a good idea, too.
So then the next thing, because we can't solve that tonight, is if you go on down, and this only came up tonight, if you go on down to the library renovations, which is on page 96.
Yeah.
The Select Board unanimously agreed to support the library CPA application. But in fact, we did have a conversation about the buckets and there's nothing.
Well, no, that came, that was at the last, no, that was at our last Select Board meeting.
So we did approve it and then we later settled back.
Yep, because we hadn't seen the, um, the warrant book, you know, the actual article.
Fair enough, fair enough. That's, that's why I'm asking your recollection.
Yeah.
So I would say we have to table these minutes until.
Right.
There's a little bit of explanation about deliberation.
Yeah. And is that something that Ryan, you can handle with Jen, listening to the recording?
Yes.
Okay.
This is for the minutes from which date?
328.
Yeah. Good, good aye, David. I think that's important. Okay, so we, uh, had we made a motion?
No.
Not on that one, no.
We didn't make a, all right, good. So, all right, so those, we'll take that up at our next meeting if possible.
And thank you, Jen. It's a lot of work, I know, so I, I don't, again, I am very appreciative of her.
Yeah.
Her minute writing skills are quite good, but we know it was an important issue.
Um, before we do community input, just a couple of announcements, one, or not a now, but requests. So if we could all look at our summer schedules and send to Jen, and you can copy Ryan, you know, what you know of in terms of when you are not going to be in town. Not that you couldn't do something remotely, but we're, I think we're going to want, you know, before the, by the end of June to have some sense of the summer schedule and when we want to do some of the goal setting, et cetera. And then the other is that, uh, just to be on the lookout for a memo with kind of a, a rough outline of the conversation that we want to start at the, at the May 9th meeting around the boards and committees that we have in town. And, and I think we're imagining, Aubrey and I are working on it, I've asked Nathan to take a look at it. We're imagining that will, this will probably be broken into two different meetings and discuss, um, look at the actual boards and committees that we have on the books and which of those makes sense to either disband, dissolve, or if there are any suggestions around mergers or. But to take a look at that list and make some decisions about that. And at the same time, also to discuss the appointment process, since we're going to need to, typically Jen reaches out to people, you know, in May to ask about their interest in being reappointed. And so we'll be getting into that process. So that's, that'll be coming to you and hopefully people can take, really take a look at it and think about it in advance of that May 9th meeting.
The packet will have all the information.
Yeah, but I think we may send it out ahead of time, just for.
That'd be great.
So, because sometimes we've not gotten the packet out till the Friday before. Yeah, which is tight, so, all right, great, thanks.
Barney? Schedule. Agenda for the night.
Oh, yes, thank you. All right, thank you very much, yes. So this is the agenda for May 9th and we know that it's already changed because we have to put the, well, no, we don't. The Center Park sign, we won't do that until June because the historic commission has to meet and they don't meet till after May 9th, so, never mind. Was there anything else we did that we said tonight we needed to take up on May 9th that's not on this agenda?
There will be the, the FINCOM, the financial policy.
Right, right. It's other financial policy.
Well, maybe you could, instead of making it five, TSAC local hollers, hollers policy, just put policies and put both of them.
Yep, right, there you go, there you go.
There?
Yep. Good idea.
Right. And then the public safety will have something, you know, more detailed from Julie.
You're working with Julie on that?
I am not.
You're not.
Ryan is.
And so there's only half an hour to talk about boards and committees?
Yes.
It's part A, right?
We put in, yeah.
Let's down, go down a little or shrink it a little.
And then Ryan's six-month report, which we've pushed off a couple of times, and I think it's important we do that.
I think Kate's right, half an hour is, what's at the end of the day? How tight do the 10 o'clock? Minutes is taking zero minutes.
Ryan, is there a way to put, to shrink it so it all shows up at once?
Yes.
The percentage button, right, upper, move the arrow up and to the right.
That's good enough. Okay, that's good enough. There we go. So any other, uh, things that you think we need to?
Well, does fall town meeting?
Fall town meeting, so let me explain, yes, yes. A date for a fall town meeting, which should be fairly simple, yeah. But it, and we've been urged by the town moderator to set it sooner rather than later, yeah.
And that's the day after town meeting, so we're presuming that town meeting will.
Only be one night. Yes, indeed.
Okay.
So that's another question. If it's not one night, do we have a contingency date for our meeting?
Yep, I guess.
Two weeks later, right? There were some issues, then we, I forget.
The two weeks later, that was when our town administrator was on vacation and.
So we, we changed it to the 30th.
No, we went.
No, we're going all the way to June 13th.
We did. Taking a break, yeah, from May 9th, we don't meet again till June 13th.
It seems to me like we should have an item on here just to chat about this town meeting.
Yeah, kind of an evaluation or a debrief.
Until July 13th.
Right.
I think that's a good point. So something, something has to give here, so.
Well, we'll go over this, we're meeting tomorrow morning, remember?
Is it tomorrow morning or Thursday morning?
Yeah, 9:00 AM.
Okay.
You sent us the invitation.
I did, so I couldn't remember which day it was. Okay, so we should take that up and we gotta, something has to move.
Okay. But we, I'm going to just note to myself, yeah, we want to do more time for fall town meeting so we can debrief, I mean, for a town meeting, yeah.
I think, I would say.
Fall town, you can debrief this town meeting and do that.
Right.
That would be all.
But it's not going to be 10 minutes.
But it won't be 10 minutes.
Right.
So, let me just address Kate's concern. The, the, the boards and committees discussion is a big discussion. The first part here is really just framing the issues for consideration by the board members.
Okay.
And we're going to revisit it later.
Okay, well, maybe that's.
Again, you know, reflecting the open meeting presentation that we heard today, and they didn't say this, but what they did say, which was really interesting, is, you know, and there were attorneys from somewhere, but they were pretty good. And said, well, some board member was, you know, was, they were teaching somebody about open meeting law and the person said, do you mean I should come to the meeting completely unprepared, completely uneducated about the issues?
No, about the opinions of my fellow board members on these issues.
And they were like, well, yeah. So, okay, that's the law, but the, the way to be more effective, in my opinion, is to sort of predeliberate in one meeting. So you don't know anything, we come, we talk about the issues.
Right, yes.
We talk about stuff, like what's important to us, and then everybody goes back and thinks about it, and then we can come back. The idea to come with a fresh issue and, you know, try to get everything done is unfortunately, because of OML, I don't think it's practical. So that's the idea.
It, it makes doing any kind of business pretty difficult.
You're right.
But.
But what it means is that we need to have more time for our meetings and having more discussions among ourselves during the meetings.
Yeah, and not all business kind of.
And the other thing that they did talk about was policies about and expectations around, um, community input. And I think that's another conversation that we should be having.
We've got a couple of minutes, do you want to share just the, what you learned? I mean, that'd be helpful to me.
Well, you should definitely, Aubrey just sent the link and it's definitely worth an hour of your time.
Yeah.
We'd see that. But the, the case which we've talked about, I forget the name of the case, but it's, it's a current case.
Yeah.
There's some legacy cases, but the current case is basically about people being discourteous in public comment. And the response is you can't shut them up just because you don't like the way they're saying it. You have to, we try to, you know, have, be courteous, we should all try to be courteous, but if somebody's not courteous, you gotta let them speak, but you just, you know. Well, the, the biggest thing that came out, and this is something that we talk about a lot, is you shouldn't deli, you don't engage the audience in a conversation. They're giving you a comment and you're taking the comment back and, you know, as we've talked about, we can, as a policy, that we don't have to, agree to maybe take that issue up some other time. As I've often said, and it's something that Melissa McMorro actually taught me, is a public meeting is not a meeting with the public. It's a meeting held in public.
Right.
So we have to remember, it's our meeting that they're listening to.
Right.
And if they want to make a comment, it's fine, but that's.
It's not going to be a discussion.
But what I, what I took away from it was that you may not. But what I, what I took away from it was that you may not shut them down because of the content of what they're saying, but you may shut them down after a certain time limit. But we can't do that because we don't have a policy. So we need to have a policy about, you may make a comment, you know, first of all, we have to talk about community input and how, you know, we could also have a policy that all, that they have to write us an email, you know, and we'll take all the emails. And we'll, we can even publish them, you know, or whatever, but anyway, we have to have that conversation, and we have to have a policy about time limits and this and that and the other thing. Then you, and, but you cannot say, well, I don't like what you're saying, so you can't, well, I'm going to shut you off. But you can shut them off if they've gone beyond the time.
Exceeded the time limit, yeah.
And Wayne is very good at that, by the way, in the moderator role, maybe different rules, but don't repeat yourself, you know.
Right, yeah. Okay, any other sort of main points that you want to share? Because we do, do have community input that we still have on our agenda.
And the other one is, if you ask any two, more than one person to do a job on behalf of the, of the committee, it's a, has to be posted. It doesn't even matter if it's quorum or not. If you, if they're doing...
You can't have two people from the board be assigned to work on something unless they, or their work needs to be done as a public meeting.
That's correct.
If, right, but...
Wait, how does that work for you two meeting to set the agenda?
Right. That's setting an agenda.
We're not, we're not deliberating.
Deliberating?
Well...
Well, on a committee, or...
You have to be careful not to deliberate while you're setting the agenda, I get... That's, that was, honestly, that was a question I, I submitted and didn't get answered.
Well, there's, there was, there's a part that wasn't, I mean, probably for time, but also maybe not everybody appreciates it. If, at least in my understanding, and this was the AGA's case with the Concord, there was a Concord case a few years ago. If you, if, say, we decide that, you know, Barney and Kate are going to form a working group and do X, clearly you've, you've created a committee structure, because you have sort of regular meetings outside our meeting.
Right.
But if, I think, and again, I'm not the attorney here, but if, if no Barney and Nathan are going to discuss why and come back once, they're going to discuss it and come back to the next meeting and report out, like they're working on something, but it's a one-time thing. I don't know if a committee, if you've really formed anything.
I, from what I understood, that still had to be posted. We, we could go and revisit the tape.
Yeah. Wow, okay.
I mean, Myers, do they give us, the attorneys give us, obviously?
Tom Harrington, yeah, he's done that in the past.
So it may be worth taking that up and then...
It's only when the staff have a commit, gather people...
When Ryan has his working group.
That's what, that's what the agenda's...
And it's only to have to, to advise him on something that he has the authority to make the... That he has discretion over, also because he's staff. Any other time, if it's us, we, we got to post it.
Yep.
Okay.
It's one of the things we tried, we tried to get you to think this way, is if you have, and if you want us to get you an answer so that you can have a more productive conversation at this meeting, you should assign it to a staff member so they can assemble a team and then bring you that answer, but it has to be very prescriptive. You can't just say, go have this meeting outside the meeting. It's, get me an answer to this problem and bring it to us so we can deliberate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was one other thing I was going to, no, I just...
My worry with the agenda, just to quickly talk about it, is that local hollers policy is a big change. I don't know if it's controversial or not, but the local hollers policy that's being discussed that's in your packet tonight is, it's a strong recommendation to change current practice. So that's got 20 minutes on it.
Does it need to be done then?
It needs to be...
Well, ideally, they're thinking about, you know, implementing it as of July 1.
So let's take a look.
This is the, the same policy that was already kind of outlined to us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely had comments on that, and I just read it here, but, yeah.
So it's, it's in there for 20 minutes, but I feel like it, when you dig in, it's going to be more, so...
Yeah. Okay.
All righty, so any more on the agenda for the next meeting? Then let me ask if those of you who have stayed with us till now, and thank you for your listening, would anyone like to make a comment? Seeing none, then I will take a motion for us to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I seconded it, I seconded it.